District Six, Chris Magnus.
Here.
At Large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
You all had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any deletions, additions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No, ma'am.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to the next item, approval of minutes. You've all had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting. Are there any deletions, additions, corrections? Not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of last month?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Right on to citizens' expression. I've got some rules to read to you for the citizens' expression. And due to a lot of people here, we're going to limit it to three minutes for you. That should be plenty for you to get your idea across. Rules for citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is the point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to progress, the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen's expression. We have three people on the, that have signed up to speak this morning. First is Peggy Tice. Peggy?
Peggy Tice, Snowflake Road, and good morning. I missed last month, but I'm back, or we're back. I want to talk about, well, we feel guilty after all the devastation from elsewhere due to Helena. But rural roads and dirt roads in Scott County traveled or bad, or bad. And they were bad before even the hurricane. So we are begging Mr. Terry Kilgore, when he goes to Richmond, to please get more money allotted for these 250 miles of dirt road in Scott County. And we thank VDOT and our neighbors for cleaning up after the hurricane. And Snowflake, we on Snowflake Road call VDOT often for work orders because we don't want them to forget us. And, and to keep us on the six-year plan. And we wish that they would come up with another plan other than the six-year plan because it's just pitiful. And, and we pay personal property taxes on these vehicles that we have to run over this, these dirt roads. And that's, that's another issue. And then another issue that's mentioned to me quite often is this Riverside property. Is it bringing in revenue or is it money going out? And I want to thank you all for what all y'all do for us, and have a bliss Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too.
Next on the list is Mr. Jim Accuso, Small Business Bureau.
Good morning, everyone, and I appreciate the opportunity to address Scott County residents about the disaster assistance that the Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, is providing to Scott County residents, as well as a number of other counties here in Virginia, following the devastation from Hurricane Helene. We are in nine centers, six days a week. I know they're going to, FEMA is going to be opening up one here in Duffield shortly. If they haven't yesterday, we're going to have staff there where anybody can come in and talk to our customer service reps to see if we can help with our long-term, low-interest disaster loans. There's no fee to apply, there's no obligation to take the loan. We can help homeowners to the tune of half a million dollars for damage to their property. Contents of their home would be a hundred thousand dollars, as well as renters. So folks don't know that we also help homeowners and renters. And then for businesses, we offer two kinds of business loans, business physical damage, and that's up to $2 million. And then economic injury disaster loans, that's also $2 million. The deadline to apply currently is December 2nd for the physical damage loans, July 1st for the economic injury disaster loans. We're here getting information out around the county. We're working with a number of stakeholders, chambers, the media. And I myself am staying up in Bristol. We have folks working, I'm working in all the counties, Washington East for myself, and we're getting the word out. We also offer mitigation coverage. We've got a whole package for folks. In addition to what FEMA provides grants, and then we provide the loans afterwards to make people whole. The terms of the loans are between 15, or either 15 or 30 years. And again, we just encourage people to come in and see if we can help you. Hopefully before the deadline, as we understand now, the deadline is December 2nd. Many times that gets extended. But again, we're always here at the request of the state, the request of the governor. If that were to come down and FEMA were to extend, we could be here longer as well. Any questions?
Questions to the board? Appreciate you.
Okay, so please come see us and we'd be glad to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next signed up on the agenda is Ms. Tammy Taylor, Commissioner of Revenue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Water clouds. Facebook, social media, we should bring them out. Hi, Danny.
You're welcome.
So in saying, in three minutes, I may go over. Commit a code of ethics. Virginia's tax codes of ethics. Ethics is not intended to be all-inclusive. Number one, commit to the highest ideals of honesty, personal and professional integrity, fairness, and ethical values. Earn respect, trust, and confidence of the public, elected and public officials, and coworkers in providing professional services. Number three, become entrusted to stewards in financial management and the use of other public resources such as electronic communications and information systems, materials, and equipment, and supplies. Number four, expose any violation of law, corruption, neglect of duty, neglect of duty, and misconduct or unethical behavior, and will not conduct or condone acts of fraud, theft, waste, abuse, or any such activities. Provide credible, honest, impartial, and objective information according to applicable laws, regulations, policies, and professional standards. Reflect nonpartisanship in professional work and conduct. Hold ourselves accountable for our own decisions and actions, and to this code of ethics. I hear seven other things that we are to live up to as an elected official. And I know all of you all are here because of a lot of things that's been put on Facebook. I will ask you, when it comes to my office and what Tammy Taylor is aiming to do, you ask me, do not believe everything you see on social media.
I didn't put it down there.
You didn't put it on there, but when somebody quotes word for word, almost exactly, she's well on her way to being one and done. That's what I said to you the other day.
I didn't hear you, would you speak up?
I said to you, I may be on my way to one and done. Because I'm going to do my job that I was elected to do.
Yes, ma'am, I did hear that.
Okay, good.
And I told you I'd do my job.
And you told me a few other things. So based on what I said to you, do you remember I said I am not going to go in anybody's barn to get their big ass tractors? Do you remember me saying that?
Now, you said that you was not going to go on anybody's property.
I'm not going in anybody's barn to get their big ass tractors, is exactly what I said. Get it right, maybe you didn't hear me then.
Maybe I didn't speak on up till I came in here a little louder.
Get it here, Nate. Here it is. You have slandered my name. I tried to live up to these code of ethics. I'm not perfect, but I'm going to do my job while I'm here to do it. Whether it's this 30 minutes, or whether it's four years, or whether it's on down the road. And when you threaten to campaign against me, it becomes political.
Well, tell us about the taxes. Get to it.
The taxes is, I'm on the agenda. I'm here to squash what you all are listening to. I will get to it. My three minutes are probably close to up. But before my three minutes are up, I do want an investigation for slander and defamation of my, my name. I can do that enough by my, myself. I can tarnish my own name. I don't need your help. But when it takes into my staff and it affects my office, no, you're not doing that, Danny. We are supposed to be leaders and-
You got it to yourself, Ms. Taylor. I didn't do any-
I want a full-blown investigation of ethicals.
I'd like to, Mr. Breeden, could I play a voicemail that you sent me yesterday?
It is pertaining to personal property, and I'm asking for ordinance. Get it right, Danny.
An ordinance for what?
Could I play a voicemail that you sent me yesterday?
Your time's up, and we'll, we'll go on. And there'll be no questions from the audience. We have the police here, and you will be taken out if you disturb this meeting this time. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I have several cards waiting. I have my number, and everybody is talking to my office. Thank you.
State your name and where you're from, please.
Bobby Powers. I'm from Daganah. Good morning, Board. I've been thinking a lot on what I was going to say to you all this morning, but instead I want to address the public. I follow your requests at their budgets for emails, texts, credit cards, savings. They charge me $40 an hour to do it. When Ms. Taylor came in this morning, she said, "Not to believe everything I'm told when I'm spreading misinformation." It was on the county webpage about personal property taxes being raised. That's not what was posted, that's what I was posting. I want everybody to know that Freya's income went, in five years, Freya's income has went from $84,000 to $120,000 or $122,000, I'm not sure. The Commonwealth Office budget went from $385,000 to $1.5 million, but the State Comp Board pays that. Where does the State Comp Board get their money? State taxes. Freya bought the Daisy Compton building for the Commonwealth Office, and it was too small, it's sitting empty. They stay at the Gaylord and the Omni Hotels that charge almost $500 a night. The Gaylord has a swim park inside of it. They are paying for $500 dinners at the tobacco company. And if they want to tax the working man's equipment, that's a slap in the face and a punch below the belt. Every time I sit on my side, every time I sit on my side by side or load my truck to pay, I have to thank the board for the privilege to give. There's nothing can be done because I tried to take them to court over this 9:00 AM meeting stuff and the meetings they have over their emails. But I got a judge that was in Kilgore's back pocket. And I'm going to tell you, reading all her emails, the only one I found on the boards that's working for us is Danny and Eddie. You can believe what you want to. But if she wants an ordinance, an ordinance, you can Google it right now, pull out your phone, what is an ordinance? It's a law. She wants another law. Tell us about the law that you want to impose, the taxes that you want to impose.
I will.
Don't get up here spilling hate towards Danny. We don't give a shit about your beef with Danny. We want to know what it's going to cost us to use our backhoes, our skid steers, our utility trailers. We don't care about that. Next election, there's nothing we can do because this is Kilgore County, y'all. I've done try. They're, they're in their back pocket. But come next election, y'all can vote the ones that vote for this tax or this ordinance. You can vote them out. The only two up there who worked their saw is Danny and Eddie. And if anyone in here that wants my name and number, you let me know. I'll give you my name and number.
One quick note, could y'all watch your language when you're getting up here? I know we get heated and we say words, but my little girl's at home watches this sometimes. So I'd just like to keep the language down if we can.
Ms. Taylor got down in my face a minute ago and told me I was spreading misinformation. And she don't know how dangerous that was. I'm in public and the camera's looking on, and she don't need to be putting herself out there in the public eye like that. I behave myself. She needs to watch her mouth, too.
I, I understand, Ms. Powers, but I'm just saying, everybody can speak their mind. I just ask you to clean up your language, please.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak for three minutes?
Yes, I would. Before I start my three minutes, may I give this to someone and hand some things out to you? I think there's even nine. Well, good morning, I'm Ron Jenkins, and I work for the Virginia Loggers Association. And my role, I'm from Goochlin County, Virginia, by the way. My role is to support logging businesses and our forest products industry. That is why they hired me. I've been in this role for about 10 years. And I'd like to thank the person that gave the prayer. That's referring to a song is exactly why I'm here, to help with the facts and to tell you the why. And I want you to know that I've worked with, had the privilege of working with loggers for these last 10 years, and I've gotten to know them very well professionally and personally. And there's some things you may or may not know. The logging industry, the loggers, first of all, are the backbone to Virginia's third-largest industry. And you can see that in the studies that the state puts out. Number one, ag and forestry together, but when you break them out, it's the third. And without loggers, nothing would happen. Nothing at all would happen. Your basic, essential products that we have, just like food, would not be available to you. But what these folks do is incredible, and guess what? And across the Commonwealth of Virginia, there's only about 1,000 of them total. And there are a lot that are going out of business almost daily. And there are lots of reasons for that. I'll tell you some. Why am I here? I would like to ask you, humbly ask, that you rule in favor of the logging businesses that are here and exempt personal property or tools and machinery taxes, whichever you're charging them, on their off-road equipment. That's skitters, loaders, anything that's used in the harvesting. It does not, we're not asking for the, the trailers or the tractor and trailer, tractor, the trucks. In other words, the licensed equipment is not what's in here. Okay? But let me tell you some of the things that these folks do. Just to start a business these days, if you were to buy new equipment, you're looking at a million dollars or more easily just for a tiny, tiny crew, just to make a living, get by. It's still one of the most dangerous jobs in the, in the voucher category. You can look that up. It still ranks high. Yet they still come to work every day, and they love what they do. But that's not all. They make this investment, and then guess what? They would like to produce at the maximum production they can. But that doesn't always work in this business that they have chosen to live in and be in. Because there are daily quotas on their deliveries to mills, every day. You, I'm here it all the time, "Well, I can only deliver this many loads." "I can only deliver," "Oh, they dropped my number." And yet, they could have produced a lot more. So that's a subject, they are subject to all the time. How about markets? Lumber? We know the housing is down. It has, the demand is low. Wood, does that mean three minutes is up?
That's three minutes.
Sorry?
That, that is three minutes. Would you like to close? Can you close?
I can close, but let me say this, and thank you for that. This is, there are so many things working against our logging businesses. And yet, they still stay in it. And what they like to do, they're small, family-owned businesses. They want to pass on that business to their children, if they can keep their children near, dear to them in this business. And this is something we need to think about if we are going to have a logging business in the future. So to get to kind of the bottom line, you know, we created the law. We had, we didn't create it, but we had a bill passed to help us get the law that then would allow you, as the board supervisors, the ability to adopt a tax code just like farmers have had for a long time. I think logging was just left out, if you know, if you want to know the truth, that's what I think. And I, I would just close with a few more things. What's going to happen if we don't do this in, in the counties that have chosen not to? Well, loggers can move. It's going to affect the landowners if the loggers have to go out of business or move away. The landowners then say, you know, they have no good harvesters nearby that they can harvest and harvest their trees. It is a very important part of forest management. The trees get health, less healthy, more subject to insects, diseases, and fire. And there's lots of things that go into just a business. If they're not willing or can't invest in their business to grow, they can't hire people in the future. They're not going to be able to stay in business. So the reasons I hear most of why we don't want to do this is money. Where would I get the money to replace it? And number two, oh, this is special, it's special. Those people, why would we want to give them a special exemption? And there are great reasons why counties have already chosen to, to say, "Look, those are not good enough, strong enough reasons." We'll find the money. There are lots of ways to do that. You all are the, are the experts in that. And as far as special, it is as special. This field and forest products, what they do, as it is for the farmer to produce the food that comes to you, is exactly that. And yet, they have all these challenges. So I would just suggest that the reasons to adopt outweigh the no. So look at their investment in the future. If you say, "I'm going to take this little bit of money now, and, and I'm going to let them be exempted," think about what they can do then with the money that they have to invest for their future as they grow jobs, as they build and buy more equipment, as they do things in the community. It's going to come back in the, in the long run. And if you want to just find someone who's in your position, that really understands this issue, look in your packet, there's a guy named James Jewett in Madison County. He was on the board of supervisors. He wrote a beautiful testimonial. When I first met him at the first meeting, he said, "I think we should not do this." And 30 days later, after doing some work and working with loggers and knowing, getting to know them, he changed his mind, and it was a unanimous decision, one of our best successes. I hope that you will come to that decision yourself and say, "Yes, we need to treat our logging business professionally. Let's, let's give them this exemption and help grow their business." Thank you.
Before you leave, could I, could I make a statement? And I stand to be corrected by our county administrator or attorney, or Tammy, or Commissioner of Revenue. Any ordinance that we passed today would be to exempt loggers, logging. It is not an ordinance to tax. It's an ordinance, right now, they can be taxed, correct, Tammy? If we pass an ordinance, it will, that you can't be taxed.
Right.
You'll be exempted if we pass an ordinance.
Those items would be exempted to, where I'm not calling up a logger or sending the 762s like I did before, and, and we can just continue on. We do have only one logger that's complied in the county throughout the years with the 762.
We would, we would have to have-
That's all I'm playing on so far.
We would have to have a public hearing, and it wouldn't be until December. But if we pass an ordinance today, it is to exempt loggers. And we'll consider farming and trailers at the same, in separate.
Yes.
And I think everyone here understands that. But I don't believe the public understands it.
We've been coming under machinery and tools, whereas I'm on the end of personal property. And the farmer would be machinery equipment as well. Two, two different categories in the taxation part of it, but exempt regardless.
Right. I just want you to understand that an ordinance is to exempt them, not to tax them.
Yes, may I respond or?
Sure.
All right, so in your packet, there's the Code of Virginia. We actually worked on this law. It took us two years. This wasn't just an overnight. We had, had to get someone that was ready and felt comfortable presenting a bill to the General Assembly to actually add this little section 14 in the, in the code section that's in your packet. And what that does is list civil cultural or logging forestry, and that's what it was. It wasn't in there until this was approved in 2020. So what, and I've seen counties do, the kind of, and I have lots of drafts, by the way, I'm happy to share with anyone, of county ordinances that are done with counties just up the road, is one of the first ones we got. So you simply announce today, or agree unanimously, or at least majority, that you will hold a public hearing next meeting and give 30 days. I believe, and if you have a county attorney here, he'll check me out on all that. And then take your comments at the next meeting, a public hearing?
Yes.
Much like you have on your agenda. And then you can vote if it looks favorable or not. You vote on whether or not to adopt a new tax ordinance in your county, on your books, that matches up with the state code.
Yes.
And exempt the loggers.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name's Jeremy Har. I farm in the Nicholsville community. I practice law in Kingsport. I live in Kingsport. But I do farming across southwest Virginia. I would like to just point out that practicing law for nearly 20 years, you have to be careful about what definitions are. The gentleman that came up here and spoke about exempting loggers pointed out that there's only 1,000 loggers in the entire state of Virginia. So there's only a handful of loggers that live or log in Scott County. The problem with these definitions of taxes on personal property versus business property is there's a lot of folks in Scott County that maybe have trailers, that have tools, machinery, that cut some timber, that do things on a part-time basis, that cut their own firewood, that mow yards, that perform a lot of other business activities. So when we are crafting any ordinance, the devil's in the details. And the details are always definitions. What is a logger? What is a person engaged in business? If I sell a little firewood, am I engaged in business? If I have a lawn service, am I engaged in business? What if I have that lawn trailer just to go cut my grandmother's yard? Is that going to be taxed? The citizens just need to know exactly what they're going to be taxed on and how they're going to be taxed. Because this audience, a lot of folks called me, and I, I never come to these meetings. And I, I flew back in yesterday to be able to be here. A lot of folks reached out to me individually with questions. And I said, "Those questions need to be directed to the board." They want to know, are they going to be taxed on a particular item? And if so, how much, and when, and how often? So the reason that this audience is here, and I speak for a lot of them, and I speak for a lot of people that couldn't be here, is they just want an explanation of what's going on. This county absolutely desperately needs money. This county needs revenue. This county needs jobs. This county needs a lot of support. And I've done everything in my power to try to do things for this county to bring in revenue. But we just need a clear definition so that the common folks that's sitting out here can understand and be able to plan what type of tax that they're going to have to swallow next year, and when they're going to have to pay it, and how much. And how do you evaluate the value of a lot of different things? Now, I'm not talking about just a farmer. I'm talking about just the average person who's working, that has items, personal property items, how those get valued, where they exist. There's just a lot of questions.
Yes, sir. If you could sum up, please.
Yes. We just need some clear understanding, and if, if everybody could put something together so that everybody would be educated on what's going on, I believe the general public would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Phil Heck. I live in Zaggles, Virginia. The, the Bible is putting heavy burdens on people, on people that works for a living. And right now, Scott County does not want jobs. Why can't y'all get jobs here to pay, to help? I got a daughter drives to Johnson City, has to go everywhere to get a job. Tell me, where's jobs in Scott County? Where are they? Y'all are killing jobs just trying to bring stuff in. And if you don't do something, this county keeps plowing- And if you don't do something, this county keeps plowing water. That's where y'all make your money on water, put sewer in and that there. That's all, what jobs do y'all have? Tell me. Where's the major, where? Where's the jobs? Pay.
Morning. My name's Roger Steadman. I live in the Patonsville area, and I just have a couple of questions. Does the county have the money to pay for this new addition that's being built at the courthouse? That $10 million addition? Do we have it? If we don't, we either going to raise property taxes or tax the farmers. And one other question. If y'all don't want to vote on it, because you know that'd be political suicide, do you, can you put it in a county vote and let all the citizens vote against it? Can you do it that way? You know what I'm saying? Put it on a ballot, call ballot, if you can, then we'll see who gets the short end of the straw, whether it's the farmers or the citizens. But y'all going to pay for it one way or the other, this county?
My name's Pete Sabatino, 901 Antler Springs Lane Fort Blackmore. Guess I have a few questions. Your, I guess, some questions to you, this, uh, personal property tax. You're going to raise our personal property taxes, what, what something? Well, it's an amendment, one of those says that you're going to have some kind of personal property tax that we're going to have to pay for?
No.
No, no, so? Why is it on here? Why do we have something that you're going to have amended, amended our personal property tax?
I'm not coming for that. I'm coming for an ordinance to exempt.
So this, you're saying that you're not going to come after raising our personal property taxes or anything like that? I just want to try and figure out what's going on here.
No.
Because I'm, I'm disabled. I have a tiny farm, and I need to know what I'm going to be taxed on, if I'm going to be taxed on anything.
I have no intent to come after your farm equipment or your farm.
Okay. I guess my second question would be, is, um, you're coming after our personal, however you're coming after, asking us for more money?
No, I'm not. I'm asking for an ordinance today to exempt pulpwood trailers and RV campers. Wait, that's it.
To?
Exempt.
Well, everybody in here is taking it, you're coming after, to try to raise personal property taxes. So I guess my question is, if we don't have the money and you're doing, raising personal property taxes, why aren't we looking in within Scott County and finding the money instead of coming in our pockets and our pocketbooks?
That's not what we're doing. Could I, could I tell you again what I said about you? And or, any ordinance that's passed today will be to exempt you from taxes. It will not be to tax you. As it stands right now in Scott County, everything is open to be taxed. Any ordinance that we pass today-
There won't be an ordinance passed today.
No, it won't be passed today.
You have to have a public hearing next month to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Or maybe I'm not too informed about it and all that, I guess, because I don't understand what you're after as far as people getting money and stuff. Is there not enough money here? Is there ways that we can look inside, somebody at the county can balance the budget a little better? I mean, there's lots of things that I see that, that we can do differently in the county, but it doesn't seem like anybody's looking at that. You got that building over on Riverside Drive. You're act, ask, you're going to have the money to put the addition on over at the courthouse. Anybody could think, consolidate and all that? We pay for the gas over there, pay for the electric over there, pay for the lawn care over there, and it's an empty building. How many other ones do we have in this Scott County that are empty buildings that we're paying all that stuff on? Is there, does anybody have any idea on that? You got a lot of smaller buildings, if you can't sell it because it's too expensive with the economy and stuff that's going on, nobody wants to buy it, why not consolidate some of our other populations that are smaller and sell them? And then, like, there's, I got, other things, there's like, all kinds of things that we can do in the county to save money. Does anybody in the county that sits on the board or any of the county employees have personal, have, uh, county vehicles? Does anybody drive a county vehicle? Home and to from work? If they do, why don't they drive their personal cars to and from work? Let them pay for the gas. Let them pay for their insurance, oil changes, tires, and maintenance. We shouldn't have to pay for that. You don't pay for my gas. And then when it comes to our roads, I heard a couple of people say, we were out powered nine days. Get it? I know it's a problem because of the storm, no problem. There was four families that were there. There was eight of us. Two and a half days, my truck, my trailer, my, uh, tractors, our fuel, all that kind of stuff. We took care of it. Who do I submit the $10,000 bill for clearing the road? And then they didn't come out for weeks after that. We did all that. We've been trying to get our roads fixed. They came out, we came here when, I guess the last time you had a meeting in the, uh, the, uh, Virginia DOT, said, oh yeah, we'll come out. And hate to say it, but that guy was full of crap. He told me, called me up, he says, I'll call you the next day. He says, you have any questions, you have any problems, you call me directly. I said, okay. He called me the next day. I said, let me see how, how, you know, straight up guy this was. I waited 10 minutes after I talked to the man. Called him, left a message. To this day, he hasn't returned my message. They came out, they filled the hole. There's three quarters of a mile worth of road past to my house and past my house. I fixed it, my dime, my dollar. After the storm, the four families that we had here, we cut it all up so we could get out. They don't show up for another couple of weeks, which I get it, I understand that. But we did it. And it seems like nobody up here can, or somebody's up here should be able to say, hey, you guys got to start doing your job. You can't forget about these families that are up at the hill. And it's, you know, it's just sad.
Sir, I'm sorry, this is a-
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Skeen, have you had any communications with VDOT regarding any of that?
This particular situation, I haven't.
Okay. Could I speak to Mr. Manis?
Yeah, sir.
I have called VDOT on Antler Springs Road over.
Sorry.
I said, I have called VDOT, and I think you've got a neighbor up there, I think is-
I can tell you, I can give you a list of all the work orders I got, and they don't come up.
And I've sent them in, and they ain't done anything. And I know that you're telling the truth.
I mean, I actually-
And I know what they're doing to you.
I'm on my farm, because they want to help out putting a turnaround in for the school bus.
Right.
I, I'm-
I found out where it was at when you spoke several months ago.
Yeah, and then they fixed the hole, and they forgot the rest of, the rest of the roof, where my house, I looked at the stones out of my driveway to fix our roof.
But I have called VDOT, and I've got the same response as you have. I want you to know that I am one on this board, that I have made several calls on that road about the brush, the tile, and the ditch.
We can do, because I was told that we want that six-year list.
Yep. We've been dealt that for about 30 years. You still young. What's that? About that road? It was, it was straight for about 10, 15 foot, then they wake up, they raise it up, and go on.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to just say a few words. I want to limit my, uh, comments to the state of the forest products industry. Uh, my name is Reed Rattler. I've been working in Scott County since December of 96. I was the timber operations manager for Gilbert NS Lumber in Duffield, Virginia from 96 through 2007. And I'm, hold the same position for Unaco Forest Products. We're also located in Duffield, Virginia since 2007. But just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at nationwide, uh, the last 10 or 15 years, we've produced about 15 to 20 billion board feet of hardwood timber. Last year, we were just over five. It's a depressed industry for several factors. None of that, although that's not related to anything going on today, but it is related to the loggers in Scott County specifically. When we started in 96, we've purchased over 20 million board feet per year. I don't know if we did five last year. And there's not a single major hardwood producer in Scott County currently. Uh, just to kind of give you an idea of the market, five years ago, we were able to pay $30 a ton for pulpwood. We opened back up this week in Duffield at a whopping $22 per ton, just the nature of the market. So my concern is, any additional cost to the loggers may be the straw that breaks the camel's back. So on behalf of the forest industry, I'm just pleased, if you can, this exemption needs to happen for them and for the future of the forest products industry, not only in Scott County, but nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public expression?
My name's Dr. Arger. I'm, I'm a small-time farmer. I know most of these people in here, they're good people. And what we have is a trust issue between the county and you all. Ever since that I have been of working age, able to read and research on my own, this is the problem, is things like this, misinformation. You all don't inform the county of anything that is going on until we have to have one of these meetings, and everybody's riled up about it. It's, it's, it is disgusting to know that we have people that I know on this board that can't get out and talk to the people that put them in the seat you're in now. How, how is the county supposed to trust anything you all say? I can't get my taxes right for the last seven years. Last year, my tax was on somebody else's, went to somebody else's house, and I got a phone call. So how can I trust anything, no offense, anything that the tax people want to do or anything you all want to do up here? I don't believe it. You all put something in the books, and there it is. You exempt it today, five years down the road, when people's making a little more money? If we do, what's going to happen? We'll have the same meeting again, and there'll be taxes put on this stuff. I think it's ridiculous that we all have to come in here and beg and try to barter with you all about how poor the county is doing, and all everybody wants to do is, is get the, the small people. I think it's ridiculous.
Good morning. My name's John Wade from Duffield, Virginia, owner of Timberline Log and Incorporated, and I'm also a farmer. I've been in business, Timberline has been in business for 35 years, and God has blessed me and my men. And this tax, I've never had to pay tax on my logging equipment. I have on my trucks, obviously. But just like, uh, Mr. Ratliff said there a while ago, the logging industry, at this point in time, in my 35 years, I've never seen it this bad, even in 2008, never have I seen it this bad. And I've been in business 35 years, and I'm struggling. And I guarantee you, I'm not the only one struggling. So any tax, any more money that we have to spend, other than what we're already spending, is going to be detrimental. Now, I'm also here for my employees, because they work, obviously, for Timberline Logging. I'm not tooting my own horn, but we have probably for the last 20 years supplied health insurance to our employees 100%. And I've been able to do that because we have good employees, and I've gave them that incentive to work harder so that we can provide health insurance. But I can't pay anything else. I can't do it. And if you do it on logging equipment and farm equipment, there's just no way I can provide health insurance. And, and logging is an industry that is tough. And everybody in here would tell you the same thing. You might go out to work this morning, the weather may hold you up, or you may have a piece of equipment that'll break down, that costs, and that's another thing, in the last four years, I'm not going to get on the political side of it, but the last four years has been detrimental to my company. Everything has gone up. But what's not gone up is what we receive for our product. So how can we keep paying for everything? We can't do it. There's no way we can do it. And I am in the process of maybe, and I'm not saying this to sway you anyway, but to, to step down, to step out of it. I'll soon be 63 years old, it's been good to me. And, and like I say, I've been blessed, God's blessed me, and he's took care of me as far as health-wise, you know? I've had a, and, and I'll guarantee you, everyone in here that's done it, even farm, has been that close, that close to death, and I have. And, and it's, it's, like I say, it's a tough job. But we appreciate the things that you do for us. I'm not going to stand up here and knock anybody, but we need your help on this issue, on taxing on logging equipment and farm equipment and trailers and whatever. We already pay a lot of taxes. And everybody thinks, oh, you know, because you've got a, a piece of land or, or a house or something, that you're really doing well. Well, I can tell you, it ain't always what it looks like it is. And you all are the same way. I mean, it's tough. Things are tough, tougher now than it's ever been in my industry. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
My name's David Sanders, been in the logging business since 1980. In 1980, I got more for my pulpwood, paperwoods, scraggwood than I do now. That's how much the industry has failed us. I also have a copy of Virginia tax law that states that suppliers of pulpwood, veneer logs, mine props, and railroad ties is what we generally do, is to be considered intangible personal property and shall not be taxed. And I'd like to hand it out to each of you all that has not seen what the Virginia tax law states.
Thank you.
With that being said, the industry has got tougher. The article in the paper upon talking with Tammy Taylor states that other counties are imposing taxes on loggers, and that is not true. Andy Cornet, one of the biggest loggers in, I think he's in Dickinson County now. I give him the same paper I give you all, and they have denied taxing him, along with the other loggers in that county. There's also other laws, taxation laws, that states specifically for the logging industry and the machinery used in the logging industry to be exempt. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Brandon Woods, East Cars Valley. Instead of worrying about taxing us farmers, the small people, and the loggers, the best I can tell, in 2023, there was 23,769, uh, residents in Scott County. I'm sorry, 2013. 2024, that's 21,386. There's all your money. Worried about taxing a hard-working man trying to provide, and everybody's leaving, going to Tennessee, wherever, not to pay taxes? If y'all would worry about getting people back in Scott County, get, get the population back up, the taxes might come back down a little bit. That's just my two cents worth. But I mean, and plus, in East Cars Valley, all the Tennessee residents live on the Virginia side, I don't know who is responsible for the, keeping up the tags and stuff in Scott County. I understand. But I mean, we need to talk to, uh, maybe Sheriff Eads or High Sheriff or whoever about enforcing some, uh, laws that we all got to pay, that they need to pay too. As you, personal property tax, as you state income tax, they all got Tennessee addresses, they ain't paying- they all got Tennessee addresses, they ain't paying no taxes. They probably renting a house, that's all you're getting. But you're losing property on vehicles and income. Thank you.
Anyone else for public expression? About leaning up against the wall back there, didn't it?
I'm Johnny Gibson with Gibson Logging. I've lived in the county now since 2013. And we just vibe out of roofs, or try to live that way. I guess the only beef I've really got today is we follow suit from where we lived in Kentucky. We pay property tax and on our business and our personal.
Net loss.
When we moved here, we just followed suit. Thought we was doing the right thing, but apparently...
Apparently, the only ones was paying it, logging tax. And we paid, to date now, $43,189.34. And if we paid this year that we got billed, $7,675,909, which is the all together, $50,848.43. And I'm Jenny Gibson, the other owner of Gibson Logging. And, you know, we've had to set our equipment up and pay extra to get it set up and higher interest and everything else, because we didn't have the money. We've almost shut our business down three times, because we about couldn't afford to make it, and this makes it even harder.
Ms. Tiller?
I would like to say, on your behalf, I never called you back when you called.
Yeah, I called you.
Yes, you did. I have calculated, and if this exemption goes through, if you don't pay this year's toll, maybe, I know you have.
I have it, yeah.
I am going to request, what I can by the code of state of Virginia, By the code of the state of Virginia, I could do current and three previous. I wish I could do it, obviously, you are my one person that has the law.
We had already made up our mind. We're probably going to go talk to a lawyer about that.
That's fine.
Because I feel like that's on the case.
That's fine, and I wish you bet on that, because I do have to go by code.
Please, you tell me on this right here. It started out at pretty reasonable price.
At reasonable price.
Was true.
Since 2020. It kept one of $2,500, and you know that.
Yes.
Per year.
And I wouldn't have even spoken about you. I didn't know you to talk to you today, but I do have your figures that I could do if this goes through.
We paid $8,900 last year, and it was hard.
Okay.
So, so y'all know.
Hopefully, you can get things straightened out with the commissioner revenue.
Back to like John was talking, we provide insurance, try to do the right thing.
100%.
I mean, I'm a God-pleading guy, for one.
We're Christians number one, and we was doing what we thought was the honest thing today. Little did we know, we was wronging it.
Yeah.
It's messed up, and we should have been informed that we were wronged by your office. That's not right. It's not right.
Thanks.
I've been up, could I just ask Tammy one question in front of everybody, so they kind of get, if she gets one? On my taxes, well, on my land, there's a state road that goes through it. 700 feet long that I own, it's 12 feet wide. It was given to them probably in 1948, when they put the road in. Well, my family and me are still paying taxes on that piece of land. Y'all, I took it off the taxes. The state didn't take it off the taxes. So if I pay taxes on it that long, then it really don't belong to the state, does it? It still belongs to me.
If there's a deed actually to the state, it belongs to them, I'll have to look at your deed.
Oh, but deed, they didn't do that. They didn't do it when they just backed up the road. They come by and said, can we move up here? Yeah, yeah, yeah. But see, y'all don't take it off our taxes.
I have to go by what is in the court records, if there was a deed recorded. I can go back and re-review this and make that correction.
No, you don't have to. I'm going to put a gate up and just start the code, because it's mine. Take care of it. I mow weed and stuff, mow the grass.
If it's not, and a deed tuned to stay, it is yours.
All right.
That's my opinion. I'm not legal, but that would be my opinion.
That's all I need to do, so if any of y'all come through again.
Anyone else for public expression?
I guess most of you know me. I'm Jeff Watson. I'm from Fort Blackmore. My daddy was in business, construction business. My brother was in the store business. I worked for VDOC, and I had to go on disability. Now, did I want to go on disability? There was no way. But I had no choice, because I could dump my job. And this personal property tax deal is ridiculous. I've got a brother-in-law that has a produce market that just started business about three years ago, Teddy. Are you all not towards the small businesses in Scott County? I want to know that.
I am.
Always.
Are we not?
Of course.
I see. I see the hands that's for small business.
Yeah.
What's that tell you? But they want to come in and tax the cash register. The scales that you put the produce on, the freezers that you keep the meat and stuff in that you have to pay. Not only that, right now, produce business is slow. The growers is done for the killing. They've got utility bills to sell that's on consignment. But she wants to go and wants to tax every one of them buildings that's on her property down there. That ain't right. That business just started. You want them to go out of business? Well, keep doing what you're doing, and they'll be out.
Anyone else?
My name is Thomas Hall. I'm out of Stanley Town, Virginia, over next to Duffield. I went down to Ms. Tiller's office. I have an old house standing over on my property. The floor is in the basement. The roof is almost ready to come off of it. When we done this last tax assessment, we went through three different boards. Two of them took it off, and the last one I didn't get to go to, they put it back on. You can't live in it, and it'll cost you $20,000 or $30,000, the best you could do to put a floor back in and a roof on it. It's made of block. It's got a basement under it, but it's a dirt floor basement. So that's really what's rotted the floor out of it. I went down there to have her to take it off my taxes. She says she can't take it off. Okay, so I went out to AppCo, out there on Daniel Boone Road, to see if they'd want to put a floor back in it. And I don't care a bit to pay the taxes if somebody put a floor and roof back on it. But when you got something standing here, and it's no camp, and I really ain't got the equipment or nothing like that to knock it down with, and I can't burn it because it's right against the wood, so I'd end up setting the wood on fire. But you pay for something, that's no camp. So they need to be something somewhere to work. Let's just say, if she can't take it off now, what happens if you've got a good house, but your house burns down? Are you going to pay taxes on it for five or six more years till the assessment comes around when your house burns down? It don't really make sense, which is not that high on the tax on it, but if it's no camp, it's no camp. Because over there, all over there right now is bushes and rattlesnakes, because I killed seven, well, put like this, I saved my life by removing seven. Because the government don't like you to do anything with them. But, you know, that's all I need. I mean, I would like for somebody to at least see what they can do about that, you know. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Stevie Nicholasville. I just got a question and a request. I want to know what we're doing to develop the Riverside property. There's no for lease sign. It's not on internet for lease. Nobody knows it's there, so... And then the request is I'd like to post the utilities, what we spent on it last year and this year for the citizens. Just so they know how much it's bleeding.
Thanks.
Sir, I didn't catch your name. I just got up first.
I'm Stevie. I'm a citizen and a small business owner.
I've asked about maybe trying to get an urgent cure in there, because this county is, to the best of my knowledge, is the only county in the state that don't have a hospital.
We don't have any.
But I've asked maybe to try to get an urgent cure in there.
I buy all my supplies out of state. I'm a small business. I work out of state.
I just wanted to... I just wanted to tell you I have mentioned that, okay? And thank you.
We have anyone else to speak in public expression?
Chris, you was, you was talking about these people that's got dirty mouths.
Yes, sir.
Well, you all, they need to clean up their dirty mouths. You all need to clean up the county. And as far as, Mr. Brick, as far as you're cutting these people off in three minutes, three minutes, that's just like John Wade and all his other lawyers. Three minutes, their lives, they put their life into this. It's a whole lot more than three minutes. It's worth a lot more than three minutes. You need to give them more time. You all getting set up our page, do nothing. And these lawyers, and these farmers, they're going out of business. You're in my business.
If you want to speak, come up to the podium. If not, we've got two people over here that can escort you out, sir. You need to come up to the podium.
I already said what I want. I already said what I want. That's a threat right there. That's a threat.
Does anyone else have anything to say at the podium?
You know, I was going, I'm Gary Baker from Booby Creek. I wasn't going to say Jack today. But, you know, Tammy's got a heck of a hard job. And I think the girl is doing the best she can do. And I know Richard Chapman, back in the old days, I think it was the last of the 60s. Sally might know, but I know them supervisors. He's got, he got them to take off all the farming equipment. Because back in them days, if you all remember, I believe they, some of them might be old enough, like me, but Dad, I remember Dad used to help the county's chickens, the horses, the cows, all these jewelry, the gold, everything, everything on the farm, they taxed them. Richard went before the board of supervisors, and I thought Jack Stallard and them boys put in a resolution that killed it all, that it could never be brought up again. But now you, I may be wrong. But Tammy's doing, she's got a heck of a hard job. And I believe the girl is going to try to do the best she can do. And I believe you all need to put in an exemption to get rid of it. And I don't think, you know, after thinking about all this, and after talking to the Gibson lady back there, I think I ordered Debbie to send out 762s because red wine jumped on my butt, that I wouldn't be taxing everything. And I told Debbie to send out all the 762s to the businesses in the county. And, you know, I might have been wrong on the loggers. But I wouldn't wrong on the farmers, because they supposed to been tuck all permanently. That's the way Jack Stallard had it back in the old days. So I think you ought to place that exemption today. Maybe not on the trailers. I don't know. I ain't getting involved in that. But now, the farmers need to be killed right on the spot, and the logging equipment, I think so too. Y'all need to put it in here, that this mess can't be brought up again. Now, that's my opinion. Thank you for... Oh, I did get to talk to the Farm Bureau in Richmond about VDOC. And I think they going to try to help us get more employees, get more equipment, and open up these new, hopefully, these new offices like we had back in the old days, when we can take care of the county.
That'd be great.
That would be awesome.
But Tammy don't need to be jumped on. She's got a heck of a hard job here.
Anyone else? I think we've got somebody else coming up, maybe?
Sure.
Trish Gibson, Fort Blackmore, Alley Valley section. I've got two different things I'd like to say. A road at 796 Zander Springs. Back in June, our neighbor spoke and got a coburn or a tile approved. We've still yet to get that. They brought a red cone and set it there. I have a grandchild riding that bus. That coburn is very dangerous. I stayed scared to death, ride her this morning. The bus is going to fall through that. Somebody's going to have to pay. I mean, this is ridiculous. And from his, from my driveway to his house is no maintenance, and that state road goes all the way up there. He had to sacrifice part of his farm, like he said, for the school bus to turn for my daughter to ride, or I would have to drive her to school every day. It's just not right. I mean, when we had the storm, my husband, his brothers, and Pete cleared the roads for us to get out, because we have elderly. He's a cancer patient that had to go. That's fine. We didn't care to do that. We needed out. Well, when VDOC came over, they were from Richmond. They worked 30 minutes and were leaving. I stopped them, and I asked them, I said, are you guys leaving? He said, yes. He gave me a number to call above what I had been calling. Well, I got the, the trees cleaned up. They did come out of that. But in the meantime, I got jumped on and talked very badly from Fort Blackmore VDOC, because I went above their head. Well, when you've got tons of work orders and nothing's getting done, then you have to do something. And as a business owner, we was in Tennessee as a business owner. We moved to Virginia, in Scott County, home-based, to have revenue in the county. Recently retired, trying to go and enjoy some retirement and enjoy our farm. And I'm afraid we are going to get our stuff taxed. When you live on a fixed income after retirement, you can't pay more taxes on a tractor, or a bush hog, or whatever you've got. It's just not right. And my other question is, why can you not pass the ordinance today while the people's here? Because if you, my opinion is, if you wait till next meeting, there's going to be more rumors, more social media, to bring more disgrace to Scott County.
Everything I've spoken to, three times, I've said, you know, today, but evidently, this could be, we have, it'd be December, correct?
We have to advertise the ordinance twice in the county paper and put that notice out there for an ordinance, and have a public hearing on it. So it has to be next month. So...
But we will vote today, we will vote today on the ordinance, correct?
No.
We will not.
You can indicate what you want in the ordinance.
We can create it today.
Create it today.
But then it has to be ran in the paper, and then it has to be...
Right.
That's when we'll approve it, approve the ordinance. It'll be in December.
I mean, I don't care to tell you myself personally, I would vote yes right now.
Me too.
Thank you.
Amen.
I think it's pretty unanimous across the board exempt farms.
So once it's in the ordinance, it's accepted and it's passed and it's law.
That's what we're trying to do today.
Or is it going to be coming back up in a few years that we have to go through again?
Not on this board.
That's what we're trying to do today, is get this started.
Yes.
We're not trying to tax, we're trying to take some tax away.
We've all been taxed enough.
We have.
It is, it's enough. And we don't need to tax any more the taxpayers of Scott County. It's got to stop. So, you know, creating this ordinance and then letting everybody come and express their opinions and everything, that's going to help us to push this along faster. So hopefully in December it'll be pushed and we don't have to worry about it anymore. But as for myself, absolutely not. I don't want to tax any farmer out there.
No.
Absolutely not. Logging, absolutely not. Business owners, absolutely not.
Ms. Gibson, I did speak to you earlier. I think I gave you my card. If you call me about your records, I'll be glad to help you.
Well, like I'm saying right now, if it wasn't for the, my husband, his brother, and Pete maintaining that road, we couldn't get in there. And when I talked to them, and not to call any names out, but like I said, I got talked to very rudely, actually cursed at Fort Blackmore because that I went above him. But when I look at how many work orders it's been in there, and, I mean, that's a state road. And the school bus runs it. It should be maintained. And it shouldn't be up to the citizens that live in there to maintain it. So, I mean, it's just the way I see it, we shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got a question. Who, my name's Pete Satina, Fort Blackmore. Who, who's putting this out before this ordinance? Is it you guys?
It shows up on Facebook. Any other?
No, I mean, who, who is, who is behind putting this out as we have to come in and say we don't want this? Who, is it you guys that put this out, this stuff doing? Well, who is it?
I wish I knew.
Well, don't you think we should know who did this? If you guys are going to charge here, we come to you for answers and questions. You can't tell me who put this out that we're here pushing?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was here last Friday in another office. And this come about, the logging equipment, the farming equipment, and trailers, okay? And I took, and Ms. Taylor told me she is going to do her job, and I told her I did mine. That's the nicest ways I know to put it. So I started Friday afternoon and I ain't stopped yet. And if I probably wouldn't have told that and started telling people, y'all would have never noticed. And it would have come up for vote and how it would have went, I did not know.
But who's, who's bringing this up? Who's, who's making these, these suggestions that...
Turn around, turn around, sir.
Right here is my suggestion and my ordinance. Do you want me to come on up and just ask it? Is everybody's...
I think so.
Because I, because I don't, I guess I'm, I don't know, maybe I'm not the smartest person around, and I just don't understand what's going on.
I tried to get you the best I could.
Yeah, it's over with. We've got things to do.
I, I think that's best.
Do we have to close public expression before, before this? Sorry. In the agenda...
Has anybody else would like to speak before Tammy can speak? Hold on just a second. I'm not a farmer and I'm not a lawyer. But I do own equipment.
Sorry.
I do electrical, oh, Chad Davis, Nicholsville.
Sorry.
Sorry, I know a few of you. Everything, we're going to not tax logging equipment and this and that. Now, I've got to pay taxes on my trucks. I do electrical, power lines, I cut trees on the side trying to scratch. So I got to pay taxes on my trucks and my trailers already. I'm not here for that. But my skid steer, hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, it don't get on your roads. I got it on a trailer, I pull it around. But if, I don't know, and she may answer it in a minute, and I hope she does, maybe I can just walk out and we don't have to have another talk. But if they do, I heard something like ten percent, even one percent. If I'm hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment with my attachments, I have to pay a payment already, what's another thousand dollars? I'm just with the farmers and everybody else, how am I going to have to pay that? Well, I'm going to have to work some more. I got three boys and I'm already out of town enough trying to make it. So I'm going to have to work even more and be away from my family even more just to make payments. I know a lot of these loggers are the same way, but I, hopefully she comes up here. But I'm not a logger and I'm not a farmer. I'm a citizen of the county and I need to know too. Not just, if you're going to exempt it, exempt it for us all. Lawn mowers, I've heard lawnmowers, I heard that, I don't know. I've heard a lot. Hopefully she'll answer it. Hopefully, hopefully she'll answer it in a minute. But I just want you to know, we're not just lawyers and farmers. We're citizens, not just them. We need to exempt them. If you're going to exempt it, hit us off.
If we could close...
Mr. Ron Jenkins from the Law Association, he wants to speak there. Did you, did you want to speak again?
Well, if I could speak as a citizen, but I spoke on behalf of the Virginia Law Association, but I don't want to go in front of any of these, these folks are better than me a hundred times, they're telling the story. And I think we're telling the same story.
Come on up if you would.
My name is James Kern, I live in Maeve. And I guess I'll appear ignorance. I didn't know about this until somebody called me and told me that this meeting was taking place. But I've got a question. I, I need to know something, and I'm sure there's enough intelligence on this committee can help me. Now, personal property, is that part of the Virginia tax code or where does this come from? Is it you, do y'all do this? Y'all set the taxes in the county, right? Just for personal property only? So that means we're already paying that, right? And what you're all going to do today is to exempt certain facts from that. So that means we're already paying the personal property. I mean, I've not received anything personal property wise. Is that true? We all get personal property tickets, right, on our taxes?
I think, I think what Ms. Taylor has told me in the past has been that the office has had a standing exemption, but nothing in writing. So that if we get the wrong commissioner of revenue in there, they could send you a bill for it. But we're putting the exemption in the writing.
Today.
So that we can say that these items are...
Are exempted.
Yes, sir.
For logging, farming, and trailers.
If the...
Basically.
If Tammy was not in her role, if she, if there was a different commissioner in, coming up, they could actually put your, stut your campers, whatever's on that.
So this, this exemption is already...
Let's say two years from now, Tammy could do it too, couldn't she?
Not if we...
Not if we pass the ordinance.
I'm talking about if we don't pass an ordinance, we do nothing, the way it is right now.
The way it is.
Somebody else could do it.
Yes.
But let's just say two years from now, Tammy has a truck, nothing, yeah? Now, we don't know that, two years is a long time. You don't know. But she could do it too, right?
Right. So what was it?
But we're putting the exemption in. She's trying to protect you.
Required to accept all things. I'm not supposed to be picking and choosing. And I'm not here to throw anybody in the past under the bus that is not my intention. Because I've been in this office and, and I just want to say, we are going to be certified, hopefully. And in learning more about it, we will be honest with you. We will be expected to have done this at the regular personal property rate. And we'd like to have an ordinance to undertake me to not do that.
What's going to me is a small business. I sell eat, a lot of things, you hear nothing. All my tools on two sets of angles. I quit my apple, you're going to tax me.
That's not personal property, that business is personal property and your tools and machinery will come on a seven sixty-two, which is totally different than what we're talking about here. All businesses are required, if they are a business January first, all businesses, this is something that has been overlooked. Many businesses have been overlooked. And I'd have a board if I could tell you some of the businesses that have been overlooked. It's not fair. That some have been doing it all along. Some have been here for forty years and never done it. But they are required to do a seven sixty-two.
No.
That's where the lawnmower taxes going to come in. All y'all that see these people pulling the trucks out to free lawnmowers on that boat truck.
If their business is low and they're making a profit, then the lawnmowers will be part of the...
That's all right, I'm learning.
Dig your discussion at the podium so he's on camera.
Sometimes it's good.
Can we, can we let Mr. Kerns finish? And, and, I don't, I hate to make it stand for so long.
In other words, what I'm, what I'm asking is, I hate to take it down, but if, if we all get something out of this, there's no use going about it. If personal property, what's it constitute now? I mean, I'm saying, I'm just talking about myself. I'm fixed income, retired. And if my, what constitutes personal property in my property? In other words, that's anything that, that could include a lawnmower or a tractor, could include a, a farm equipment, always, you can, you can, but if, is it, does, because all I get now, I think on personal property now, of course, my home, I guess you could count that as personal property. Maybe a bill or two. And I see, what else would it be? Cars, automobiles. All right, I pay that. But as far as being exempted, the day you're, you're going to pass the ordinance or talking about later, later date, you're going to set it up to date where you can pass the ordinance, to where you can exempt the logging industry.
Yes.
All right?
Farming and...
And farm, which I, I think that's a good thing. If I'm due to pay that on, on something else, because I never did before, paid on a lawnmower, I think everybody's confused about that. I think, now, from what I understand, they're kind of confused.
If that was like I guess Ms. Taylor said, if you was using it as a business.
Oh, yeah.
Or you can handle rental property, and Ms. Taylor maybe can correct me here. If you was using the lawnmower, you have a rental piece of property and you was mowing the yard into me, I would see it as a two because you're taking care of it. Would that be correct or would that be wrong?
No, only if you are out here owning yards as a business landscaping in that regard.
Okay. I looked at it, I looked at it as both ways as a two.
In other words, twos are exempt, right?
Yes.
Logging equipment, twos is not exempt.
Your personal twos.
On their, on their trucks.
This is, this has been on the books forever. I don't, unless Mr. Baker's writing years ago, maybe there was an ordinance. I don't know.
It was not an ordinance.
There was not a coordinated attorney. It's been on the books to where they could be taxed. This will take that tax away. Make sure it doesn't... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern.
If y'all vote on it today and say y'all ain't going to do it, can y'all bring it back up in two years and vote on it again and say you will do it?
No.
Yes.
Yes, she can.
You can, but don't, you can, but don't. I ain't, I'm just seeing what, what we can do and where it's going.
If you have a new board.
A new board, can they do it?
Yes.
Can they do it right now? Before you leave it alone, don't touch it. Like it was last year. Can they do it?
Tammy is ethically obligated to charge for it if we leave it alone and don't touch anything.
I am to assess all things. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be talking to you.
It's all right, we'll, we'll, we'll get it all out there.
Where, where, where is that law at? What can I look on my computer, Google, you know how it is these days? I will see that law that says she is guilty. I kind of see it like this, this is something new, but we've had computers and everything now for thirty years. This ain't the first time it could ever been thought of. Or, or there a place where I can go that give her the law? Or like Ms. Tammy, that you, that give you the law?
I have a coburn in my office, if you would like.
I will, I will come by and get the coburn. Then I can say, well, she does it. But it's kind of funny, it's all happening now, nobody else is doing it. Because now this is a money hungry county. And they don't let too much slip by.
If Baker could just say one thing.
But they don't let too much of it get by.
The logging tax came up, Chad Hood was on the board, I don't remember who else. It came up several years ago and Chad invoked it against it. And so it, in other words, it didn't go through. So it has come up before on the loggers. I do know that. But I just wanted to say that, so it has come up.
Thank you.
If we can close public expression now, we'll skip to item number nine, the new business and bring Tammy up. Anyone else want to speak?
Could I ask Mr. Wade a question while he is just speaking? Mr. Wade, are you paying taxes on your twos, on your service trucks? Okay. So I've been told by another guy that he was being charged. So I just noted, I just want that, that question, thank you.
Okay, we'll close public expression and we'll amend the agenda to where we move to item number nine, eight, commissioner of revenue, personal property tax request. Tammy.
First off, I would like to apologize to you, Chris, for my language. It was quote, and it was word for word, but I do apologize for using foul language.
Sorry.
And I usually don't do that, and I'm sorry.
I'm stickler for it, I'm sorry.
I understand. Okay, so my purpose for being here today is for a request of an ordinance to set or exempt the personal property rate specifically pertaining to the pull behind trailers and campers. And we don't probably have a handful but boats and aircraft, and we don't have any airplanes. But it all kind of comes in the same category at this time. So I have a current comparison of personal property rates, and these are being charged in the adjoining counties on pull behind trailers and RV campers, just the same as a personal property rate, like we would pay on our vehicles. That's the personal property rate. So we have Lee County at one point nine five, Wallace County at one point six five, Norton City at two point oh five, Russell County at one point nine five, and Washington County at one point seven oh. Without an ordinance, our personal property rate right now is one point six five. I'm required to, and, and the reason this has really come up is because I am wanting to bring our office up to par, and we are required to get certified, and we are taking classes, and we are learning, we are trying to educate ourselves, and we hope to educate others in us learning as well. What's really going on here is I'm asking for an exemption for the RV campers and the trailers that's pulled behind. And it's at the board's request or at their discretion as to whether or not to even exempt it. Otherwise, my job duties are, I have to accept them. But I am here to ask for it to be exempted. I know my job has not been done in the past, and I cannot speak for why that's not been done in the past. I can only say, this is my job. I was elected to do the job to be fair to everybody. But without an ordinance, I have to do it. I'm asking for the ordinance to exempt it. And then I am protected, I can pass all that we are going to be required to go through because of our certification. And to speak on the farm, can I speak on the farm? This, this kind of coincides with all this. Even though... Even though farm equipment is going to be machinery and tools and equipment in that category, it's a different levy rate. In our little meeting the other day, I said, I will not, I will not come get no more trackers. I'm not doing it. So I may be short term, short term, can't pass all of it, but I will not come after your farm equipment. That means I'm not doing my job. I'm asking for an ordinance to exempt the farm equipment. Then I will be doing my job, but I don't have time to come looking for your farm equipment. Or you don't have time to bring me your Schedule F, which I can get, and summons, I don't have time to do that. I don't want to do that. I'm not willing to do that. But that's, that's a whole different category, and then we get over to the logging equipment, which we talked about in July. And we can back up and put that maybe in the same respect it kind of is. It's up to the board. I just need the exemptions. The Schedule C, that would be, I could summon, I can't, I have the authority to do that. I don't have the authority to not tax you guys or assess you guys without an ordinance. And I'm asking for an ordinance. I'm asking for the ordinance. I have a RV camper at Mount Arway and a Vagon pull behind trailer. These are things me too. I don't want to pay taxes no more than anybody else does.
Are you asking?
But I do want to do my job. That's what I would like to do.
Are you asking for all this to be exempt today or just the pull behind?
Since we all talked about it, let's ask for it all.
Okay.
Are you asking for a complete exemption?
Or a lower rate, or a lower rate, I mean, it's different.
So that's what we need to sort out, what's going to be exempted, what's going to be?
Lower rate or an exemption, but the exemption I prefer.
So you wouldn't tax them at all, like they've not been taxed before?
I wouldn't even have to assess them.
There will be no new taxes on anything that hasn't already?
It would all be exempt in this regard, in these categories, just these categories, not all personal property.
No, we'd still tax what you're already taxing, not the vehicles and, but this would exempt?
It would exempt the RVs, the trailers.
There are, the code sections have like, there's one code section that is for like personal effects, bicycles, pianos, oil paintings, so we would exempt all that.
Well, you can put all that in, but I'm pertaining to.
That's what's usually in an ordinance.
Yeah, you can put all that in, but I'm.
There's another code section that's the farm equipment and the logging equipment. And then there's another code section that has the boats and.
That's more details than what I was asking for, but I am.
So if we're exempting all of it, it all needs to be in?
Just put it all in there. That's fine with me, because I'm not coming after anybody's.
I do have a question, Ms. Tiber.
Keepsakes and the jewelry and the things like that.
Well, that's, as of right now, we don't have that, so that's what we need to have in the ordinance.
Yes, put that in there, please. So I don't have to do that. That's more than I even thought I was bargaining for. I don't want to do, but yeah, go over and above.
I believe Mr. Skeen had a question.
Yes, sir.
Which items are you taxing now that's on the seven sixty-two form that were not taxed last year?
Not taxed last year?
Yes.
We are taxing anything that you report to us on a seven sixty-two. That's totally different business personal property than what we're talking about here today.
One thing that I'm familiar with is I have rental property, nightly rental. I'd never received a seven sixty-two form before. I am now.
And it's a business because it's.
How could you choose to do some and not others?
No, we're all businesses.
So everybody does seven sixty-two this year?
It's the best that we can do. I'm just going to tell you all. We have added two hundred, at least, businesses to not take in. We have, we're in discovery mode, and if I get an uproar today, I'm so sorry, that's not my purpose for doing this. I am trying to do my job. We have businesses right in front of our noses. People will drive by right here in a little bit when we leave here who have not ever turned in a seven sixty-two. Business personal property is different than just regular personal property, though. So we're talking about like three different things here. Two hundred, we don't have two hundred new businesses. We don't. If you're a business the first of January, you are required to report a seven sixty-two.
Those businesses that are not complying with that, are you able to go after them or follow up with them?
I am, I am. We, we have, we have scratched and dug and poured reports. And we are burning hours after our time. We are in here that people don't know that we're in here. We're trying to be fair. It is not fair that you have a business that's been here for forty years making really good profits and really good money, who's never turned in a seven sixty-two. I will not owe no money, and I'm telling you all, you would be amazed.
I love you, man, I forgot, you know what?
I, I understand, and I understand. I'm not here to talk it out or throw nobody under the bus. I'm here to do my job. And my job is actually harder, and I even thought I was signing that fourth when I run. I knew it would be stomach a lot, blocks, speed bumps, but I'm telling you guys, there's these businesses. And it's not fair, it's not fair, it's not fair, it's not fair that I had to put on two hundred. Am I bragging that I did that? No, I'm not. I am telling you, I am here to do my job, and I want it to be fair for everybody that has a business. Everybody. I can't always see, I mean, there's some right here in front of me, like we have that one. We go look on our computer, we don't have that. We don't. But we're going to get them.
These new businesses that come online, does that show, say, that a personal property should go down soon?
Hopefully, I don't know if I get them all to comply, get them in here to comply this year.
What about the dollars?
I'm voting, I'm voting. I have a right to summon their records. If they don't comply, I'm summoning them to my office. If that don't work, I'm going to subpoena them to court. It'll be a misdemeanor. That's my job. I was elected to do my job.
You got a hard job.
And when there's a discretion, if I'm not hitting the records, I can statutory them. How am I going to statutory? I've got to figure out a fair market value. I've got to know what they have. If they would just bring it in, comply, this is what we had first of January, we are good to go.
Well, if you want to make the legal taxes in the town.
I'm sorry.
The property taxes, the legal taxes, if you want to make a little mention.
I don't really collect things, but I bet Kevin is on it. I can't speak with Kevin, but.
The legal pays their taxes, and it looks like we could get a break sometime or another, did these other folks just live them for free?
I agree. I've been seeing in the code, current and pre-creators, I can go back forty years, just like, I can't read them forty years if you pay what I'm supposed to.
When you go after new businesses, this year it's got to count, and the word gets out. Why would new business want to come in? We got no more town leases, we got no more bills. Somebody comes in, wants to put a business in Scott County, well, y'all go to Tennessee and stay the night, or y'all go to Wausau County, or go down here to Duffield at the Matthew's. Y'all know what that is, that's your state now.
That's what it is.
You, you're, you're.
I'm doing my job.
I know, it's a hard job.
And I'm fair.
But it's got to meet the minimums.
It's not right that you've got.
Right.
The gift of.
But before you go after them and the word gets out, don't believe them, they'll get out real quick.
You run a list in the paper.
Go to them and say, look, this is what we're going to do, we know it. It's hard as business, don't want to come to you.
It's not that I'm going after them, after them, like I've got a target or.
But you're, that's the way people look at it.
That's the way they see it.
That's the way they see it. I mean, call it, lock it in.
They do see it. They're like, she's coming, she's coming, but I'm going to do my job.
Yeah, and I understand you got to do it, so.
In Nicofield, we've got many nights, they've come in, they've got business, well, they want to be required to pay. Because listen, they got way more money than any one of us sitting in here, I guarantee it, they got more equipment and all this.
All business. All business. Unless they are in practice, they have a five oh one C to be practicing.
But it's a business, St. Church. I go to church.
Right, I say business, I mean.
The church, the church not working on my equipment.
No, so business is going to be a thing, it's not always.
We need to look into that, because that's a lot of money. I paid a lot of money. I know these farmers, a lot of them have used that. That's a business, they're not worshiping it.
Well, I won't talk about a specific reason. I refuse to talk about somebody, and they're not here to defend themselves. I will not do that. But I will tell you, these are businesses, they are required.
You go, you go, you go.
Okay, Sally, where do we go from here? Do we need to, just going to lump all these together, correct?
That's up to you all. Whenever you make a decision, we would, you would make a motion to advertise for a public hearing of this ordinance in December.
We need discussion. We need to discuss this. Board members, do you have any suggestions?
I suggest, I suggest we lump them all together and advertise.
We have to put, we have to put them separate, though, right?
No. It's all in an ordinance.
Just one ordinance?
If you're exempting everything, or what you're exempting, you list in the ordinance.
In one ordinance, so it doesn't have to be like machinery and tools as one?
This is just personal property.
Okay, so we're going to start with personal property first?
Personal property exemption.
Okay.
Nothing about machinery and tools.
And Darrell needs to make a motion.
The logging equipment and all that will come under.
Machinery and tools.
Machinery and tools. The logging equip, they were questioning, they put it all together, not saying the logging equipment would be machinery and tools, whereas the RV campers and the pull behind trailers, those kind of things would be personal property, just to get it exempted on the right.
Before we do that, before we go, is there anything else on the seven sixty-two form that you think needs to be exempted?
Anything that's on a seven sixty-two is required to be reported as of right now, and that is not even why I'm here today, but we went there, so.
I'm saying, are we going to be here again trying to exempt something else?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I hope not.
Okay, Darrell needs to make a motion.
May I ask you a question? What, can you guys define what we're, what you guys are talking about?
That's what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah, we're a little fuzzy on it, too.
You guys have been talking for two hours, and I still don't know anything going on.
A business personal property, someone has a business is required to turn in what we call a seven sixty-two, which you would write down for inventory or.
But that's not being addressed today, is that correct? So that doesn't matter as of today, correct?
It wasn't on.
What is being addressed today is what I want to know.
The personal property, RVs and campers.
So it's RVs and campers is what we're talking about, correct? And that's it?
The things that would be in that section.
But no logging today, correct?
But then we will go to logging since we're here and we have talked about it.
Hold, hold on, hold on. Tammy came here today to talk to us specifically about RVs and trailers. However, there are numerous other things that have come up since then that we plan on, or we want to exempt as well, such as the logging and farm.
Farm equipment.
So.
And that is going to be addressed today, correct?
We are going to make the motion to change the ordinance. We have to advertise that in the paper, and then in the December meeting, we will have the final vote on.
And the final vote?
We will have a definition of what you guys are voting on today. Because we don't think anybody understands the real.
We'll have to have that, we'll have to have our attorney draft the ordinance, because she's got the different sections in there, so she will pull all of those into one ordinance, or to one, one ordinance, where it will list out exactly what those are. That'll be advertised two times in the county paper, is that right? And then in December, we will take that ordinance and adopt it.
That will also be on the county website, too, correct?
Yes. The advertisement will be.
Yes.
The advertisement, so you can read it there. I mean, we're still trying to understand it.
Alright, so we're going to package everything into one ordinance, so that's trailers, or do we have to have two?
So we're doing personal property first. So personal property would be your pull behind trailers and RV campers.
Boats, planes.
Boats, planes, trailers, all trailers, all trailers.
Farm equipment, logging equipment.
Is machinery and tools, right?
Machinery and tool, machinery and tool does come in the code under personal property.
Machinery and tools is a different topic.
That's a different, it's a different levy rate for me, but they are in our book as machinery and tools. So it is personal property, but machinery and tools is a subsection.
We need to have some silence so we can hear what they're saying.
The people who have paid, who have made pay, is that machinery and tools or personal property tax on the logging equipment?
It is. Equipment slash business is how we have it, and it's coming under machinery.
Gentlemen, if you, if you want to talk in the back, would you step outside, but the other people can't hear, and we can't either?
So is that machinery and tools tax, not personal property?
On the levy rate. But machinery and tools actually comes under, machinery and tools actually comes under personal property. As well, is part of the personal property book.
All I know is what the code section has.
Go by what the code says.
Exemptions for personal property.
Because we get into different levels, so if you want to do personal property, I think it'll be covered because machinery and tools is another category in our personal property book, so we should be covered.
Logging equipment is what they have cited as being added to the code section a couple of years ago with the farming equipment, so all that would be in the personal property tax exemption ordinance.
Okay.
If that's what you all wanted to.
I think I'll, I'll make that motion, that we prepare an ordinance for next meeting and have it advertised that goes over the list of property, personal property tax exemptions for campers, RVs, pull behind trailers, farming equipment, and logging equipment. Is that?
A host of other things.
There's some other things that's in the code.
Just go by the code.
Can we just say et cetera?
Just go by the code, do what the code section says.
We will retract the language in the code.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, I'll third, I'll fourth.
Okay. Sally's in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a ten minute break and then come back. In its entirety, the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance, I'm.
What rest is that? Stephanie, we was about to start without you. We started without you.
Come on, there was a lot.
We'll begin public hearings with the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety, the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance, to reflect the law as it now reads in title two point two, chapter forty-three of the Code of Virginia. Is there any discussion or any public comment? If not, do we have a motion for the adoption of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Manus made the ordinance?
I'll second.
Motion.
I'll second, sorry.
Sally's in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearings. Seven B, possible adoption of an ordinance to amend the personal property tax exemption for disabled veterans pursuant to both subdivision A, eight of article X. And section six, article ten, section six of the Constitution of Virginia, and fifty-eight point one dash three six six eight of Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty. Any discussion?
Could we just have a brief description of that, just so we have it on the record for people that watch this, since we've had a lot of tax questions today?
We have had this ordinance in the past for a total exemption for disabled veterans that meet the criteria and submit things to the Commissioner of Revenue's office. This ordinance amends to add wording that that exemption doesn't, it expires upon the death of the veteran and doesn't, um, go to their surviving spouse. So that just clarifies that, and it's based on the code section and the Constitution of Virginia tracks that language.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the adoption of this order?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think Mr. Skeen got that one.
Mr. Skeen's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Close that public hearing and open up seven B, public hearing. I'm sorry, seven C, public hearing pursuant to the requirements of section fifteen point two dash eighteen hundred of the Code of Virginia. To consider the disposition of real property owned by Scott County, being the former law office of Daisy and Compton, located in the town of Gay City, tax map number fourteen six eight seven eight one ninety-four at one seventy-nine West Jackson Street, Gay City, Virginia. The proposed transfer of the property is to Diana Holligan. Any discussion? Any discussion by the board? Do we have a motion to accept this proposal?
Do you need anything else in that sale, do you think? Um, you would approve the disposition of the, this property to her for a hundred thousand? And authorize the chairman and the county administrator to sign and take any actions necessary to complete the sale.
Okay, we need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Castile's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, on the agenda, under number eight, unfinished business. Update on emergency declaration.
We've got Mr. Gerald here that will give an update on agriculture, and Bill, if you wouldn't care to get the PowerPoint ready while Mr. Gerald's speaking.
Good morning, I'm Scott Gerald, I'm an agricultural extension agent for Scott County. Um, as I had stated previously, as I've been before the board, our declaration through the state emergency support function is to do agricultural damage assessments in each county. And that can cause some confusion, because some folks think that we're involved with the remediation or, uh, the caution part of it. But we just do the agricultural damage assessment that gets turned in to the emergency services. And, um, it's important to assess what damage is done, because that then either triggers or determines what potential, uh, assistance could be available in the future for farmers and landowners. To date, we have assessed two point six six nine million dollars worth of agricultural damages. And that includes things such as, uh, losses in hay, barns, um, the trees that are down in timber is an additional two point zero seven nine million. So we are looking right now at four point seven five million dollars worth of agricultural damages in the county, that, that is real damage. What that does not include is, uh, potential lost income from the future for animals that were lost, for sell off of animals that will have to be replaced. The lost income on the timber, the value that it had standing versus the value now that it's on the ground. So that number, if we put realistic values to it, could be between the six and seven million dollar range for Scott County. And, uh, you know, one of those things that we need to keep in mind is, is this, a lot of our farmers viewed their timberland as being, uh, part of their retirement package. And that retirement package would be when it matured and they wanted to cut it, uh, that would be an income source. For those trees that are on the ground, that is no longer an option for them. So, um, as we look at the damage around, somebody's made the comment, said, well, it's devastating, but at least it was just the timber. That's an actual loss for our farmers, a tremendous loss. Two other things before I, I close for questions, is we do have a household water testing program that will be coming up next week. For anybody who may have had damages to wells, um, cisterns, springs, and may be concerned about the water quality. This is a, a reduced cost, it is seventy dollars for the water testing, it will be done at Virginia Tech. Uh, there are scholarships available that would reduce that cost for eligible individuals. But I do have some flyers that I would like to hand out to the board, uh, for that, and then I think Mr. Skeen is going to mention later on that our twentieth, uh, premium insured heifer sale will be coming up November the thirtieth. And I do have some flyers for that, if you all have questions with it too. Are there any questions? Alright, if not, I would encourage, um, folks to look at the disaster recovery site that FEMA has set up at the Pioneer Center. Um, even for things that you may not consider, lost items in the freezers, lost time at work, issues like that. Uh, they are beginning to open up and accept people in, and just see what they have. I had the question that was posed to me, well, we didn't have that much damage, why are they here? They are here on the invitation of the governor, on our behalf. So use that as an opportunity, um, to, to go see what potential funding there could be to help. There is also a talk from FEMA about doing an agricultural, um, disaster recovery site. And that is a resource fair that will be put together in the Lee Scott and Wise County areas. Um, that is still in the incipient phases, we do not have the date or the location yet, but once that is put together, I'll send that information to you all also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a short update that I wanted to provide as well, um, if Bill wants to click, we'll get started on that. Um, as you know, uh, Scott County was approved for FEMA public assistance. And so far, some damages that we have had and have cleaned up in the county as far as public. Uh, we had a lot of trees down at Scott County Park and Golf Course and at Keith Memorial Park, uh, we had those trees removed, and our walking trails were both completely closed, and those have been opened back up now, uh, after the tree removal. We had damage to the roof at E nine one one, and a new roof has been installed there. And we've also, uh, had a lot of tree damage and debris down at the landfill and tran, transfer station property, and our staff there have been using the equipment that we have on hand to get those items cleaned up. We are, um, continuing to compile a list of expenses for the county when we do our public assistance requests. Um, I have a spreadsheet that we're plugging everything into so that we can get that, uh, request done. As far as individual assistance, um, Scott County was approved by FEMA for individual assistance on October thirteenth. Um, just very important note, the deadline for citizens to apply for that individual assistance is December the second, that'll be here before you know it. Um, as of eleven four, which was Monday, there have been two hundred and sixty-two applications from Scott County citizens. FEMA went door to door in areas with the most damage, and they visited or left information on home, on two thousand ninety homes. They've also placed flyers at businesses, they've been set up at the flea market, and they've visited the food pantries to help spread the word, um, to those affected where they can get the needed assistance. Uh, Scott County Virginia Star and the Kingsport Times News have both published the information on how to apply, um, for needed assistance. And we also have all that information on the county website, social media, and then we have monitors out in the foyer here outside this room, um, that have that information on them as well. Um, like I said, for FEMA individual assistance, that deadline is December second, um, there's four ways that you can apply for assistance. You can apply at www dot disasterassistance dot gov, by phone, one eight hundred six two one three three six two, by using the FEMA app on your smartphone, or by visiting a, a disaster recovery center. The closest disaster recovery center to us is now at the Pioneer Center in Duffield, that opened yesterday, and they are open Monday through Saturday from eight AM to six PM, they are closed on Sunday. So if you've got any questions at all, that's your best resource, is to go there and meet with someone, one on one, face to face, and get the information that you need and your questions answered. So when you apply, there are some questions they're gonna ask and things you need to provide, uh, a description of your damage, your contact information, including your phone number and address where you can be reached. Your address at the time of disaster, your social security number, your contact information. If you have insurance, they'll need your policy number, agent, or company, your annual household income, your bank account information, if you would like to receive benefits by direct deposit. And that checklist is also available at the website disasterassistance.gov. FEMA also has a program called Individual and Households Program, IHP. That is for people who are eligible individuals or households affected that do not have insurance or are underinsured. Um, it is not a substitute for insurance, and they cannot compensate for all losses. Um, some of the IHP assistance may include funds for temporary housing, funds to support the repair or replacement of owner occupied homes, temporary housing, funds for hazard mitigation, funds for other uninsured or underinsured needs. And there are fifty-two eligible IHP residents, and the amount is sixty-eight thousand six thirty-five fifty-five so far on IHP program funds.
Is that, is that total or per person?
That's total.
Okay.
So far. So Agriculture Recovery Resource Days, as Mrs. Gerald mentioned, uh, we have one tomorrow at Highlands Fellowship Church in Abington. If you, um, are out there and you have ag damages, um, tomorrow from nine to six, Highlands Fellowship Church on Watauga Road in Abington. There's also one on Saturday from nine to five at the Whitfield Meeting Center in Whitfield. And they are looking at a central location for Lee Scott and Wise Counties to have one, um, closer for us, so be on the lookout for that. And I will share that information once I have a date and time confirmed. And Small Business Administration, uh, this will, this is my last slide, uh, he was here earlier and spoke during Citizen Expression. Uh, the Small Business Administration works closely with FEMA to assist businesses and homeowners in the form of low interest disaster loans. The loans are for homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofit organizations, um, to cover loss that's not fully compensated by insurance or other resources. Homeowners may be eligible for a disaster loan for structural repairs and rebuilding. Homeowners and renters may be eligible for a loan to replace personal property, including damaged or destroyed vehicles. The deadline for physical property damage is also December the second, and the deadline for economic injury applications is July first, twenty twenty-five. So, um, as I've mentioned before, December second is a very important date, you don't wanna miss that deadline, uh, for FEMA assistance if you do need it, if you're out there, need some help. Once the emergency is passed and we end the declaration, uh, we will have a debriefing on items that we're going to work to improve on. And what worked well and what didn't work well, um, during this process, so that'll be upcoming at a later date.
Thanks for that.
Okay, we'll move on to, under item number nine, part B, animal friendly license plate fines. Freddie, you wanna explain that?
Sure, um, I believe that's on your tablet, the form that we usually get. Um, may not be, uh, we, we get, um, funds back for each animal friendly license plate that is sold in the state. Uh, this year, it's a hundred and ninety-five dollars, that's a little bit more than we've got in the past years. Um, so what we've done in the past is give that money to the Humane Society, it's not something that we can keep, uh, for ourselves. So I just need authorization, um, if you so desire to give that to the Humane Society again this year, that we authorize that, where we can get our forms sent back to the state.
I will make the motion that we give that money to the Humane Society.
I'll second that.
Sally's making the motion, and Ms. Glover's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Part C, under, on our agenda is veto voting credentials. And, uh, this year, Ms. Addington and Mr. Manus are going. Ms. Addington is gonna serve as the voting representative, and Mr. Manus is the second. We need a motion on that? All.
We need to ratify that, that was sent in before the deadline, so it needs to be ratified.
Okay, do we have a motion to ratify this?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Glover's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Ratification carries. Under, uh, next on the agenda, D, Information Technology Cyber Security Position.
This is a position that's being requested, um, to help in our IT department. Uh, we are looking at a mid-level position, uh, to advertise for that. Our information technology department, um, has a lot on their plate, um, keeping us safe in the county, plus an extreme amount of hardware that they have to keep and maintain. Uh, cybersecurity is at a place and time where we wanna do all we can to keep the county safe, to keep our servers safe, um, to keep people out of our, uh, data, that would be very harmful. You know, if we had a hack or something, we'll hear about those in the media all the time, so we wanna be really careful. Um, we have two people in the IT department now, and we have a help desk support person, and we have our IT manager, both are extremely busy. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Bright has talked to you all about his needs, so I just wanted to put this on the agenda today to see if it was possibility that we could get this position funded, um, with board action.
How we, what is the cost for?
How we, what is the cost for it?
We're going to advertise the position at $53,000 and with benefits, that would be about $75,000. So the position, if it was approved, would be for about seven months this year with a start date of December 1st. If we could get applications and everything together, get it advertised, get applications, and do the interview process by then, it might be a little later than December 1st. I have a line item in the budget that is for IT-related software that I don't think we will use this budget year. So that could go for part of the salary and I would need about $22,000, which we could add to the budget once it's amended later this year.
Any other questions, discussion, or do we have a motion?
As for the extra $22,000 that we need, that would come from probably the interest Kevin's getting. I understand that that's more than what we originally anticipated.
It is. You could move it from a line item that we have excess revenue in at the time, or you could just take that from the general fund as well. I mean, it's, by the time that we're amending the budget, we'll have a better idea of where we're at for year end. So that's two options. You could do it from the general fund or you could actually move from a line item into a salary line item.
I talked with Mr. Bright and it's definitely a need for him. It's not just a luxury.
We don't usually come and ask for things unless they're, especially positions, we know the position the county's in. If it's not something that we feel is very needed, we don't come and ask.
Yeah. I know for myself, I didn't understand completely the magnitude of the stuff that he deals with, but it is the Commonwealth Attorney, sure, for the county.
Of course.
Yeah, most of this stuff's on-prem too. So that means if there's an actual physical server that lives here that he has to tend to, that's not an easy job.
Further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Skeen, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're down to book key to the items.
Please appropriate $20.93 to county administrators, vehicle and power equipment fuels, 1,000-12110-406008. For insurance claim, receiving deposited at the treasurer's office. And appropriate $4,576.23 to the clerk of circuit court. Conferences and training, 1,000-21700-405540. For reimbursements received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate $966.18 to park golf course equipment lease, 1,000-71110-405435 for a refund received and deposited. And appropriate $1,053.75 to park golf course merchandise for resale, 1,000-71110-406099 for reimbursement received and deposited.
Do we have a motion to approve appropriations and transfers?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Jeter made the motion and Mr. Manus second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All to appointments. Ms. Tina?
You have three appointments to the Tourism Development Committee. You have applications from...
Transfer.
Oh, okay. I thought we did, didn't do that? Okay.
Please transfer $1,800 from the incorrect expense code, 1,000-35100-406003, animal control, food and catering, to the correct expense code, 1,000-35100-406006, animal supplies food.
Do we need a motion to approve transfers? Glover made the motion. You have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry about that. Had my mind somewhere else. Now, Ms. Tina.
You have three appointments to the Tourism Development Committee. Ishmael Richardson, Amy Mann, and Jennifer Pike have applied for those positions.
Can I make a statement on behalf of Ms. Pike? She is interested in the Heart of Appalachia position, which I have also applied for. So she's requested that she be considered for that position instead of the tourism position.
Do we want to do that in reverse then? Who's applied for the...
Jennifer Pike from Fort Blackmore.
Is there anyone else applying?
No, those three.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Jennifer Pike. She does apply. That's the first we will consider.
Hold on a second. She talked to Mr. Skeen and she is not wanting to do the tourism development, correct?
She's wanting to do Heart of Appalachia.
Right. So you have two applications for three positions on Tourism Development Committee, Ish Richardson and Amy Mann.
I'll nominate Amy Mann.
I'll second.
We have a motion to nominations.
I'll make a motion that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Amy Mann, Tourism Development, and Ishmael?
Ishmael Richardson.
Ishmael Richardson on Tourism Development Committee. Do we have a motion, a recommendation?
He currently serves on that board.
I'll nominate it.
Nominating?
And I'll make the motion that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job. And the Heart of Appalachia, Jennifer Pike, nomination by Mr. Skeen.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Mr. Manus?
To make.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So that leaves us with still a vacant seat on the Tourism Development.
Who's the new tourism development position? I was thinking, she would sit on that.
It's her committee.
Okay.
He's thinking about the information technology.
I was thinking.
The next position. There is one other position that she will be on, I think.
She'll be on the Ninth District Development Finance Board.
That's what you were thinking about.
With, Frida?
I'm the alternate.
Alternate, yeah.
Go ahead, Tina.
In 2015, the Board of Supervisors made a motion that the tourism director would serve on the Ninth District Development Finance Board with the county administrator serving as the alternate. We now have a new tourism director, Brittany Robertson, and she needs to be appointed to that board with Frida Starnes as the alternate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Brittany Robertson to the Ninth District Development Finance Board with Frida, the county administrator, as the alternate.
And I'll second the motion.
Can we vote by acclamation?
He appointed, so...
Yeah, it's an appointment. Right.
Or do we...
It's an appointment like the others, so...
Okay.
So you nominate Brittany.
I'll make ready.
Do the acclamation.
And then I'll make a motion that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good job.
So you still have an opening?
We've still got an opening for the Tourism Development Committee.
We can re-advertise that if that's what the board wishes to do.
Let's re-advertise that. I'm going to try to think of somebody now my way too. I'd like to see a district six representation on that board.
Good.
No offense to anybody. If you find good people, send them our way.
Find good people.
Okay, we're ready to move on to item number 12, Attorney's Reports. Is that correct?
I don't have anything today, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Keglin? If not, we'll move on to item 13, County Administrator's Report.
You have your claims in your folder in the green, on the green sheet. The general fund balance after claims is $7,471,012.40. As you can see by the comparison chart, we're a little ahead of where we were this time last year. Claims for the month, early sets totaled $570,038.27. Total claims for the month that will need to be approved is $1,456,828.89. You've got a list of claims that are over $5,000. The largest one is the regional jail quarterly payment, $562,796.30. So that's why your total's greater than normal. So just look through that list and see if you have any questions about anything that's on there.
Any questions of the board? Not, we need a motion to approve claims for the month?
Seems like we may come out in a hole this year on regional jail, right Frida? Got more inmates than we...
At this point, we do have more inmates than were budgeted for. So we're still early, we're one quarter in, so hopefully things will turn around before we get to the reconciliation at the end of the fiscal year. If not, we'll have to true that up in next year's budget. Plus, we'll be budgeted for more, so it'll be, you know, it's like a double whammy. Point of the year, you have to pay, you're having to budget for more too. So we'll keep an eye on that. But right now, we are trending up on inmate count.
The five inmates that the Lebanon facility is going to take, do you know if that's happened yet?
No, but I'll do an update and check on those at C Core.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll see what's happening there.
Any more questions, comments? Motion to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Ms. Addy made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And under miscellaneous, is that the date you want to talk about?
I do have one thing under miscellaneous. The state gives a half a day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for a holiday, and I'm requesting that the board give the other four hours as holiday pay and close the office for that, that day. That would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Two and a half days of that is state paid, or state holidays that we do follow. So I'm asking for an additional half day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Mr. Manus. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Jeter second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's December 3rd, Tuesday morning, right?
No, something different.
Okay, that's different. All right. Down to item 14, County Department Reports. Mr. Barry France.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. And I apologize about last month. I was supposed to present last month, but that's what we were dealing with. I'm going to talk a lot about storms. I know y'all heard a lot about storms, but I'm going to talk more about storms. But I appreciate you letting me move my presentation to this month, so I'll try to make this short and sweet. Hopefully, it's all good news today. Start off with the storms. You know, Frida brought up Keith Memorial Park. Out there, we had a lot of trees fall. We had a lot of trees that necessarily weren't on the trail, but they were hazards, they were to come down. So that trail was probably closed for close to three weeks, but appreciate Bill, Frida, our staff, everybody working on the hard to get that cleaned up. So that trail's open now. It was a mess. I went and walked it and I know if y'all are familiar, the first left side, I was like, man, this ain't that bad. This is going to be okay. And then I got to the backside turnaround and it was, I mean, you about couldn't walk through it, so. But, and I'll reiterate this a bunch, you can clean up a mess. We were very fortunate, no damages, no significant damages. So, you know, you can clean up a mess, but we were very lucky not to have anything, what I would call significant long-term damage. So we got that cleaned up. And then you'll see there on the slideshow, I've got pictures. We missed a couple of weeks because of the power outages and stuff. We would have ended in October, but this Saturday will be our last day of our Otis Roten State Farm Youth Volleyball League. Probably, I mean, I love everything I do, but the volleyball's probably one of my favorites and probably everybody else's favorite. We have over 140 kids in it, which is a very good turnout. That's, we usually average between 120, 150, so that 140, that's, that's good. That's what we, that's what we've been getting. Have a lot of great people involved with that. A lot of great coaches, a lot of great parents, a lot of great kids. It's probably one of our best. You'll see there, okay, so the last one is in October, we always let them dress up for Halloween, and that's always. So I always tell them, I was like, now be smart about it. Don't wear something crazy, get hurt in. But you can see some teams did the whole thing, which was really cool. The kids like that. I dress up too. I'm not going to show myself in there. I'm scary enough, but volleyball league's about to end this Saturday. It's probably one of the favorite things I do. It's just, it's a really good league. We got a really good turnout. We got good people involved, so that, that ends up this Saturday. I'll hop down to the golf course side of things, again, talk about the storms. The course was unplayable, plus there were some safety issues. We closed for over two weeks up there to the public. Now, we were up there working the whole time, but as far as safety and being able to play, we did have to close for over two weeks there. And that was at the 1st of October, which was besides the storm. If you remember, that was good weather. So that definitely would have been some big revenue, but I'm happy to report we're still at a 15% increase even with that over last year's revenue. And that's fantastic because last year was, as you know, I've said it many times, you know, we keep going up, 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 and, you know, we were on a good track and then we were closed for two weeks and I kind of got worried and then I saw, man, we're still, still good. We had a great, great, great July. So that kind of gave us a buffer to, you know, kind of weather those two weeks we were closed. So that's good news. Again, we had extensive cleanup after the storms. We have a walking trail up there and it was probably even worse than Keith Park. You couldn't, like I said, I mean, you couldn't really even walk it to assess it because it was so, so many trees down, so much brush down. But we've got that cleaned up, so it's back open to the public. Again, no damages to greens, which would have been significant, I think, a green. I think those greens are insured for $30,000, but I'm, I think that point needs to be updated. Those, I don't even want to know what it would cost to rebuild a green with the drainage and everything. So no buildings damaged, nobody hurt, which is important. Nothing, nothing significant. You know, we had significant trees down, a significant mess, but no damages, no significant, you know, long-term issues. So we were very thankful up there. I was actually up there probably stupidly Friday when it was happening. And very quickly, I realized, I saw probably while I was there, six large pop, I mean, like, uproot and fall. And I thought, man, I probably don't need to be up here. So I got off there. It felt like a movie, but we, we were very fortunate though. I mean, I know that there's a lot worse things than a mess, so we just had to clean up a mess, so that's part of it. And lastly, I know I talk about it all the time, but Scott Service, they were up there. There may have been one or two days in that two-week period that they weren't up there. We did have to do some bigger stuff and get some bigger equipment to get some, I mean, we had some big stuff up there, required contract work, but we would not have been able to open as quick as we could without them doing some of the smaller things so we could focus on the big projects. So definitely want to shout them out. They're just, you know, they help us do so many things up there. Whether it's basic maintenance or if it's something like this, they really, I mean, they went, they were there, so definitely want to thank them. So really, that's about all I have. Volleyball's going good and we're still increasing play, still increasing memberships, still increasing revenue, so. But we've stayed busy, so things are going well, so. That's about all I have for today, unless y'all have any questions or comments.
I do have a couple of things.
Yep.
We briefly touched on the extended hours.
Yes.
If you looked at that.
So that, you know, we talked, and I said I would get back with you. I did have an employee that was in the hospital for about two weeks, he's fine. But, that happened, and then this happened, I really haven't, and just with how busy we've been and the staff we have, I've not really been able to approach, and I apologize. We were just at a point in time where I couldn't even attempt to try to make that, you know, to see what that would look like, so. I don't know if it's worth revisiting in the spring, like when we get busy again. Obviously, right now, extended hours aren't on, you know, we were closing early because of the time change. But, it's something I definitely want to revisit, I just wasn't able to during that time. And I know you mentioned also, Mr. Skeens, the pickleball. I haven't done a lot with that, but I did talk to some companies that do the striping and the painting, and every one of them basically said, for the two courts we have, it's probably better for us to look at doing something in-house, and I've looked at some different. I think it's something we can do easily, we could just do it ourselves, so. That's probably the pathway I want to take on that, because they said, you know, for those two courts, just to come out and do that, it's probably more cost than we would think. And they even said, you know, there's kits you can get, and I've been researching some of those, but I think I'm just going to do it myself, for, for, for our purposes, since we don't have standalone pickleball courts, you know, or it's still going to be a tennis net. It's still going to be a tennis court, so, he said, man, if I was you, I would just, I would just do it yourself. He said, there's some kits, and I think it'll serve the purpose, you know. Which people already do, come up there, and they, they put down some tape. I put down tape one time, tape doesn't work. I want to have to get some type of kit that's actually designed for that surface, 'cause just no, nothing that you just get out of the store is going to adhere to that. I mean, within a day or two, they, they rip up, so. But I think it's just something I'm going to do myself, so. But I did look into that, and he said, man, it's just not worth the expense for us to come all the way out there just to do those two. And I get it, I, I get what he's saying, so. I think that place is out of, maybe Memphis. I mean, there's not a whole lot of local court striping companies, you know, so. But, both of those things, I don't mind to revisit, but like I said, the, the striping thing, I think we did ourself. The extended hours, may, may need to revisit that in the, in the spring when we get, you know, usually about April, May is when we start getting really busy again, so.
And the time change.
Time change, yeah. It's crazy how that, I underestimate it, then you go outside, and you're like, man, that hour makes a big difference, it really does.
That hour makes a huge difference.
So, some of the high school kids, which we ha, we've had a huge influx of membership and players from the, the young kids, which is great. You know, they're not happy that we're closing, or, I'm like, guys, y'all get up there by four, you can play nine holes in an hour and a half, you know, but. They, 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 they really support us, I mean, I, I love to see the young kids doing it. We've got a huge, huge group of young kids playing, so, and that's good. I mean, school gets out, here come, here come the kids, you know, every day, so.
Great job, Derrick, and it's good to see that fifteen percent increase. The, the one thing I've got calls on for the past couple of years is that road up Reed Hola, and it's been paved.
It's got paved, yeah.
It's great.
Wish I could take credit for that, but I just drove one day, and it was there. Oh, no, it's, it needed, yeah, it's much, much, much better.
I just wish they'd gone on over to Highway Seventy Two, maybe eventually.
I know. And I do, I know, I don't want to get on the wrong side of this, I know a lot of people criticize. I, I know the city did a great job. There was, there was a lot of debris down on that road, and, you know, obviously, they had some stuff they had to get to, but really quickly, they, they, they did a good job. You know, we had to come through City Two for a couple of days, but, City VDOT, they, they did a good job on getting that road cleaned up for everybody, so. I do appreciate that. I think a lot of it was the city workers too, they, they did a lot there on that road. The golf course road, which is before you go up Ford Drive, that side, you couldn't, I mean, there was numerous, numerous things down, so. I appreciate them, I mean, it took everybody, but, like I said, I mean, there were some bad things that happened, some major damages. We, we just suffered a mess, and we can clean that up, so we're, we're very fortunate, so.
Good job, appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate everything.
I did have one more question.
Yes, sir.
You said seventeen percent increase in revenue.
Yes.
How does that translate into a number of members that you all have gained, or a number of games played? What kind of metric are we looking at?
So I did, I, I can get that, you know, I think last time, I think I had the numbers for memberships, but I just know since then, I, you know, when I do my, when I do my turn-ins to the treasurer's office, it's broken down into different sections. And I know we, we've, we've sold season passes since even the last time I talked to you all. And most of that is the junior memberships, probably, if we gained fifteen members since I talked to you, I'd say twelve or thirteen of them are junior memberships. Rounds played, yes, definitely have. And like, I think I've told y'all before, one of the biggest things you see is people coming from other, they were maybe regulars at another course, even in Tennessee, you know, other different areas, and they've come, I mean, from Wise County, from Lee County, they, they've come to us, you know. Pricing's a big part of that, you know, we, we talked about raising our pricing a little bit, that's been, that was the right move. Because some other places raise them too much. And I think they almost, well, we've heard that from people, they said, I used to play here, but they went up ten, twelve dollars a round, you know, y'all went up two dollars a round. And, you know, we, we've retained those people. I don't know how many people have come from a different course, played it, you see them for a couple of days, a week, and the next thing you know, they're like, hey, man, I joined. I joined up, this is the place to be, so, you know, we love to hear that, so. Yeah, that revenue number, I mean, obviously, the, the price increase on the cards helped. But I'd say that, the majority of that is just an increase in play, an increase in members, yeah. More so than just that dollar made the fifteen percent, no, it, it was the increase in memberships and stuff, so.
Yeah, next time, I'd love to see.
Yeah, I can get, our membership, yeah. Rounds played, I can get a good idea, the reason, because there, there's a green fee line item, but there's also a cart fee line item. Well, if you're a member, you don't pay the green fee. You know, so that it's, I can, I can get you a good, probably, idea. I can't get it down to the round play, because in a membership, you know, and then if you say carts, there's a lot of young kids that don't get a cart. They're members, but they just, they, they walk, not a whole lot, but a few do, so. I can't get an exact, but I can get you probably very much a good estimation of, hey, we probably got this increase of rounds played. Yeah. And definitely the membership, that's easy, I can get that one easy, but rounds played, I can get a good estimation, so. Yeah, thank you, I appreciate everything y'all do, thank you.
Next on the agenda is our new tourism director, Mrs. Brittany Robertson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I know most of you all in here, but for you who do not know me, my name is Brittany Robertson, and I am filling some rather large shoes with the departure of Pam Cox as the tourism director. I'm doing this in a part-time capacity. A little bit about my background, I am currently a faculty member at UVA Wise, I teach in the Department of Communication Studies and have a marketing PR background. So I was so excited to jump on this opportunity. I've worked with Pam in the past with a few of the videos that she's done, and I am just hoping to stand on the work, climb on top of the shoulders, on top of Pam's shoulders with the work that she's already done. This is going to be rather brief, as I'm still kind of working to integrate myself into the role. But I wanted to talk to you all a little bit about a few of the things that Pam had worked on in the last few months, and some of the things that I'm going to be continuing with. And I apologize, I didn't know that I could hand out goodies, so I only have one to pass around, but I've got more of these. I don't know if you've been able to see this, this is the Bounty Trail brochure that Pam was able to secure with the Bounty Trail Grant. So I'm going to show you a few items from that. So the Bounty Trail Grant that she was able to secure, she's worked with Cumberland, or not Cumberland, corporate marketing out of Bristol, and handles, they're, they've been handling some of the video and website production with us. And, so we have two websites now, which is the Scott County General Website, the Tourism Website, and also now the Bounty Trail Website. Some items to note, the users in terms of visitation in the last month have been up sixty-six percent in terms of visitation. Organic acquisition is up five percent, which means that's people going there organically on their own. Some items to note, I thought was pretty interesting, in terms of the locations where users from the website, or visitors to the website are coming from. Nashville, Bristol, Johnson City, all of those are up, King Sports up, so we've got a lot of local places, but it's nice to see some of the places outside of the immediate area popping up. In terms of the actual Scott County Tourism Website, a couple of things to note there. We've not had, our clicks and impression, our impressions are up a little bit, our clicks are down, but that's something we can work on. Something of note here with our user locations on this website is that we're getting places like Atlanta, New Jersey. We've had a couple of places in California pop up on that website, which is pretty interesting to know that people are looking at us from that. Our organic landing pages, which means people are visiting this on their own, are coming, looking up Devil's Bathtub, obviously. Natural Tunnel, which is up twenty-two percent, which is really exciting, and I think with some more promotion of Natural Tunnel, which is an amazing natural resource, we can really kind of grow those numbers. Little Sunny Falls is down a little bit, and then Hunting is up by seventy-three percent, which makes complete sense. So being able to play off of things like that, I think is very interesting. I don't know if you've seen the video, but Pam had these lengthy videos produced. This is a thirty-second commercial that she did. I hope I. Well, I embedded it, I'm helping those text out, so. At any rate, I can send those out at some point, but she had two, we, we shared those on our social pages. She had two, or she had one lengthy seventeen-minute video produced. And then she was able with corporate marketing, break those up into thirty-second commercials. One of those, or both of those, which will be playing at the Lambsburg Visitor Center this spring, so that's something moving forward with those videos that she's wanting to do, and that'll kind of slowly wrap up the Agri-Tourism Bounty Trail Grant with that. So that'll be something that's looking, that we're looking forward to in the spring. So, the other thing, I don't know if you had a chance to visit the website, the Bounty Trail Website. It's got all of our partners on there, apiaries, nurseries, farms that we've got on there. There's also a really great interactive map, which I would love to be able to expand on some other opportunities with those interactive maps, because I think they do a really good job of user engagement. But it's an interactive map which shows all of the places in our county that are participating with the Bounty Trail. And she also did something with the Sunflower Selfie Trail this year, which was the same sort of principal lists of all of the places that participated in growing the sunflowers, and where you can find those. And again, if you go on the map, these are actually, or on the website, these are actually interactive grants, or interactive maps, which is really neat. These are just some of the key indicators with corporate marketing that they provide. This just goes to show a little bit about what the website looks like in terms of growth, and what the traffic looks like. Again, you can look at the user piece, which shows that it's up sixty-five percent. The Bounty Trail Website, a lot of that's had to do with targeted marketing, that corporate marketing did, as well as boosted ads on social media, which helps a lot too. And then that's the Scott County Website itself. So that one has a little bit of down trend in terms of users, but not by very much. So, we're looking forward to being able to kind of promote that one a little bit more. They, they've had a lot of heavy emphasis on the Bounty Trail, which has been great. So we want to be able to continue doing it with the Scott County Website as well. So, moving forward, a little bit of what I'm excited to do, like I said, phase two of the Agri-Tourism piece includes video placement and brochures in Lambsburg Virginia Visitor Center, which highlights Scott County and the Agri-Tourism work that we've done. Also continuing with Facebook and YouTube marketing ads, so these are thirty-second targeted ads that will direct you to the Bounty Trail Website. Corporate image is handling those types of things. Personally, some things that I'm looking forward to doing, I have three things on my agenda of things that I'm looking towards, working with. Again, Pam has established a phenomenal foundation of tourism in the county in terms of our print materials and marketing materials. I have more of a social media background, so I'm looking to obviously increase our social media presence. That's free marketing, as much as, well, within reason, it's free marketing. So as much as we can get ourselves out there on social media, I think the better we are. We have so many natural resources that we can highlight, so I'm looking to create more short-form videos. If you're on social media or YouTube much, you'll see YouTube reels, Instagram reels, Facebook reels, YouTube shorts. These types of things are trending, and they're also things that really draw in users and draw in saves and shares and metrics that are important in terms of visibility. So I'm really going to work to push the short-form videos and things like that. Also interested in doing small business spotlights and Scott County stories, so people and businesses in the county that may have been around for a long time or have interesting stories. I've been reaching out to a few of the local businesses, trying to set up some things so we can get in and do some video content for them, and just kind of go through and start sharing all of the places that we already have, and modernize it a little bit in terms of the video content. And then the last thing that I'm interested in doing, and I've started working with a few individuals on this, is creating a small business slash entrepreneur network with all of our small businesses and entrepreneurs throughout the county, because we have a lot of these. And the goal here is that we provide a support network, so that we are, we get all of these folks kind of in the same room together. And we've got like-minded individuals who are dealing with a lot of the same things, running their own business, so that we can help provide resources, so that we can also direct them to help market themselves, because any marketing that they can do for themselves ultimately helps us from a tourism perspective as well. So being able to kind of connect the dots with all of these folks, and have these people able to work together, and be able to look for resources together. We have so many, you know, I was talking to a few folks from the office, we have so many talented business owners and entrepreneurs that are kind of spread out, and it would be nice to be able to piece these folks together and give them resources and support to kind of help one another. So I don't know what that's going to look like, I'm, again, in the very early stages of creating all of these things, as I just kind of stepped into this role a few weeks ago. But I've started putting those things in place, working to connect those people, so. I know that was fairly brief, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Brittany, I think we're fortunate to have you in this position, it's good to see you.
Thank you, it's good to see, it's good to be here, I'm excited.
Any questions of?
I will make comment, I've worked with Mr. Robinson on the project, and I'll say you made an excellent choice. Much forward to working with you.
Thank you, I look forward to it as well.
Yeah, of a small business entrepreneur network, I would really push you to work with the EDA and the Scott County Chamber of Commerce.
Actually, I have a meeting with the EDA at twelve-thirty, so.
I'd, I'd love to see, there's so much synergy that you all could have there.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think it'd be a great.
Well, and one of the things that we have at UVA Wise, we have, it's called the Nest, which is a, it's a small business incubator, kind of like a network. And, and I'm, I'm going to look at that model as something to kind of utilize. Actually, Jeff Arrington and I started this discussion a few months ago, and we both agreed there are just so, I mean, me doing the tourism videos with Pam had me kind of hopping all over the county, seeing all of these things we've got going on, that me, a county resident of thirty-eight years, had no idea. So it's like, okay, well, we've got all this stuff going on, how can we link these people together to, to be able to utilize resources together, to be able to provide them, whether it's, you know, troubleshooting on certain aspects, or whether it's bringing in, you know, small business entrepreneurs who have, you know, handled things, or who have built successful businesses in small areas. Bringing those people in to kind of help them network, I think that's so important and really needed. So I'm excited, very excited about that piece, and like I said, I've worked, I've talked to a few folks from the Frontier, Gaze City Frontier about this, and looking at reaching out to people in the Duffield area, and Duganen, and all those areas, to be able to kind of create that network. I think it's going to be a good thing.
Other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Will add, this time will add to our agenda, our Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Cal, you go.
I'll be really brief, I know you guys have had an impromptu morning. I flipped on, I try to watch your meetings, and when I can, I flipped on, I noticed that my office was mentioned, and my budget was mentioned, and there's questions raised about that, and that's fine, I'm really just asking kind of a, I'm asking to be invited back. I'd like to make a presentation, just what it is my office does, the changes from the budget, I think it was, I think it was sent through eighty-five to what it is now. I'd like to go through that, the different sourcing that that comes from, you know, it doesn't all come from the county. Whatever we get from the county, we're grateful for. I, I realize that I have made probably several, since being elected, several presentations on Scott Service, but I haven't really done a presentation detailed on what it is we do. There's been several changes just in the law of what prosecutors are responsible for. There's pretty sweeping criminal justice reform, and there's, which adds more workload, and so anyways, I'd like to just come and walk through all that. I don't know if that would be helpful or not, at, at your next meeting. I know, like I said, you've had an impromptu morning, I don't want to bore you, but I'd like to get some charts and things together just to show you caseload and all that, and if you guys will be all right with that.
I think that'd be great.
That'd be great, absolutely.
We could all be educated a little bit.
That way, that way we can maybe explain where some of their money's going.
And I, and I understand that, I mean, I, like I said, you look at it on paper, right, I totally understand that, I'd like to. I'd like to add some context, and you may not like the answer, that's fine, but I'd still like to, like I said, educate if, if possible. I apologize, I don't have a blazer, I just saw that I was mentioned, and I came straight from the office, so I didn't, didn't run home, so I apologize.
That's fine.
But anyways, I just would like to come back next meeting, and I'll have you, hopefully, a entertaining presentation. I know it's not...
I hope the people there, well, maybe you can, because you have contact with her, maybe you make sure Ms. Powers knows, because that's who was asking.
Actually, I talked to Ms. Powers for probably three minutes, and I don't know who she really is.
I was trying to remember where it was mentioned. Thank you.
I just saw, and it's, I'm not, don't take this as me jumping up and down, I just would like to address and explain to the best of my ability, and...
Sure, I think that'd be very helpful.
If that's helpful, if not, you know, that's fine, too.
Is that Ms. Powers, the one that was up there earlier, that was speaking?
I, I think it was, but that's just kind of what I called, and that's...
I have, I have talked to her a couple of times.
And again, no problem, her right to say whatever, but I'd just like to, if possible, address that, and explain, and bring you all the data, and then let you guys be the judge.
Thank you for watching, and coming down, and...
No problem, and I appreciate you guys inviting me to come back, even though I'm kind of by myself. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to Board of Supervisors, comments, requests, and recommendations.
I do have my standard update on VDOT, if you'd like me to proceed at this time.
That's fine.
Roadside debris, I talked to Mr. Sumter this week, just to get an update on his end. He's the VDOT WISE Director. The roadside debris cleanup, he said was 85% complete. The calls I've gotten this month regarding the storm, I've had some with string cleanup, and mostly around low-water bridges. He said the environmental review has been conducted, and they're now scheduling the work, and it should be completed by the end of November. That's for the low-water bridges. The last round of primary mowing is complete, and they're working on mowing the high-volume secondary roads. Virginia Farm Bureau attended a dinner, Darrell was there, but Mr. Baker mentioned this. They have some resolutions they're submitting to the Virginia Legislature this year involving VDOT. Encouraging VDOT, or the agency responsible to conduct routine and regular cleaning of road ditches, culverts, and maintenance of right-of-ways. Support local control and maintenance of secondary roads. Encourage the Tobacco Revitalization Commission to support, educate, and encourage large animal vets to practice in Virginia. And I did speak with Dr. Eversol, the Animal Science Director of Virginia Tech, and Mr. Gerald, I know you have heard this. They are experiencing a reduction in the number of large animal vet students, and it's a national shortage. LMU is the largest vet still in the United States, with 1,200 students, and they're currently looking at expanding the campus in Lee County to expand their housing. On the PSA, Robinette Valley Waterline Extension is being planned. They're handing out user agreements in the area. If someone needs one, they can go by the PSA office in Weber City and pick up a user group. Railroad Crossing in Daniel Boone, that's for the sewer. It's scheduled for, by the railroad, for November 12th. They're still trying to schedule with a contractor on that. Nature's Conservancy, Nick Proctor out of Abington, we've had an opportunity to visit the Fort Blackmore Point River Launch Site for boats, and they're, I think, going to start that project next week with those improvements, and they're looking to improve it even more next year. Scott County Horse Association's having their first turkey shoot in Dugannon at the Horse Park, November 9th, that's this weekend, Saturday, 3:00 PM, and they're planning additional shoots, but they've had a real successful year last year. Something that Steve Pike wanted me to mention with Spearhead Trails, the Dickinson County Shooting Range in Clintwood are offering free shooting for veterans on Veterans Day, November the 11th. It's a multi-level shooting tournament at no cost to veterans and free food. Scott County Cattle Association, Mr. Gerald's name gets mentioned often, and he played a big role in this Bounty Trail in Scott County. The 30th year bread heifer sale is November 30th at Washington County Fairgrounds in Abington, and he handed out the flyer on that. There's 120 head of mostly artificial bred, top-end bred heifers. Now, these will be two-year-old heifers. This 20th year, it keeps growing, thanks to Scott and the Scott County Cattle Association. And I have cattle myself, and several of you do. This starts when that calf is born, and they develop that heifer calf for two years until they get to this sale this weekend. So they put a lot of time into it, a lot of money. The APCA Program Incentives for First-Time Home Buyers. A Virginia Housing Program is offering a 1% mortgage rate reduction. I'm going to just touch briefly on it, if you need, I'll give you some contacts here at the bottom. But you can get a 1% mortgage rate reduction, you must qualify for Virginia Housing Program product. Down payment assistance, there's income qualifier, credit score must be at least 620, and you can get up to a 10% sales price reduction incentive, up to $40,000 max. So this is on your down payment, 10% sales price reduction. Savings down payment toward purchase the first home, you can earn $10 for every dollar invested, up to a max of $10,000. So if you invest $1,000, you can get $10,000 back in return for first-time home buyers. You have to be 18-years-old, US citizen living in Virginia, and there is a household income requirement. There are financial advisors available, and actually, there's a loan bank that services this region, and they will offer counseling for people wanting to do financing. That APCA office, and that's where Frida originated from, I guess from Scott County, it's at 175 Military Lane, that's, that is in Daniel Boone, right past Scott's office. That telephone number is 276-452-1224. But for first-time home buyers, there's a lot of things going on for that, so Amy is the contact there, Amy Bone. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
I had a quick question about your VDOT comments. Pete Savatino and Trish Gibson were both in here about Offspring's road. Did you get in contact with them the last time they were here? I think it was three or four months ago.
I did know.
And they're back?
I've asked her to give me a call to get what they've done, and Mr. Sumter, I think I said that day that he was going to get with them, so I assumed that everything had been taken care of, but she told me the day that. So I will be assisting her with it.
But, no, I took, had called VDOT approximately three months ago or so, and maybe, maybe four months now, and, because the town is, like, like she said, dangerous for us to down, kind of short, brush, sitting like a scuba, beating through the brush, and everything, and, like I told her, I called, and you've heard them say the work order numbers, and seem like some jobs they jump on pretty quick, and some jobs they don't. And if they don't get it in in the next little bit, it's going to be the rainy season, because it's a creek that we should do there.
Seems like Kyle's one of the ones that they don't get to too quick. I've seen them on the list for a long time, and then they finally stop. We've had a few down there, that way. Just making sure that somebody's following up.
You know, VDOT is getting some roads paved and repaved. The fire we had down at State Line the other day, I was coming down to the bottom of Kyle Hill and the road was blocked, so I went up East Carter's and down Newland Hola, all of Newland Hola has been paved now. That was the gentleman at East Bay asking for water down through there. Also, Reed Hola, I mentioned a while ago to Derek when he was in here, they paved Reed Hola, and Foot Mineral has been paved over at Duffield, from Foot Mineral all the way through Maeve, I think, out to the road coming from Fort Blackmore.
That was from last year.
Was that last year? That, that road's in good shape. And then, of course, down at Daniel Boone, they've gone all the way down through there, where they did, redid the water and sewer, so they are getting some stuff done. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, please. Speaking of the fire at State Line, I know that our first responders, our fire departments, sheriff's office, EMS, they've been very busy for the past two months, and I want to give them all a big, big thank you, and God bless each one of you all for all the things that you do for our county. They probably don't hear it enough, but they do need to know that we do thank them, and we do appreciate the job that they all do. I also want to say that on November the 26th, at 6:00 PM, at the Boozy Creek Community Center for District Two, I'm going to have another town hall meeting for the folks of District Two to come out and talk to me. I help a lot of people do work orders and things like that with VDOT during these sessions, that, you know, I get out and talk to them, but I just want them to come out and talk to me, and, and just voice their concerns, and, and what are they, they're concerned about, and everything. And then I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I pray everyone has a wonderful day, and God bless each one of you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good job. Anyone else?
Wayside at Yuma, we're still overrun with Tennessee trash. There was a truck come in there yesterday at 2:12 with a whole trailer load of Tennessee tags. I don't know what we can do about it.
We've got it at East Carter's Valley also.
It's covered up every day that you...
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what we can do, other than it'd have to be somebody there all the time, that's expensive.
Yeah. Someone mentioned in our meeting this earlier, and afterwards, I walked out and talked to some people, and they were complaining about Tennessee tags that live over here, and driving back and forth, and we've talked with the sheriff about that, and he says there has to be a lot of observation of that. I don't know what we can do about that, either. Some of these things, Highway Department, you know, things like that, and dumpsters, we're open to suggestions.
Yes. I've suggested before, if a man would put a camera on each and every one of them, and a loudspeaker to, somebody could be sitting like somewhere in the office, Sheriff's Department dispatcher or something, maybe even somebody, somebody over at the shop at the plant fields that are out, watching it, and having four employees there to watch it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Then we could open them up, and when you'd have them on camera, you sure, would you take it in front of the judge? Now, you can ask the pitcher any kind of question, but you'll get the same picture. That's the way I can see that's going to stop it, if it's ever going to stop.
It just takes one pitcher, and one good throw in the book at them, I would think, if we could get somebody to cooperate on the prosecution side.
Is there any more discussion or comments? If not, we need to go into closed session? We need a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it, second it.
Darrell made the motion, and Danny second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On a motion by Darrell Jeter, duly second by Danny Castile, this board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 to discuss A1 Personnel, County Evaluations of County Attorney and County Administrator. Go into closed session. Go into closed session.
...
That's the only one we need to address right there.
So the board meeting would be on Tuesday?
Tuesday, December 3rd at 9 o'clock. And also the January meeting is on January the 1st. So would you want to have that on January the 2nd at 9 o'clock? Be on a Thursday?
That'd be fine, but...
Now, what'd you say again? I didn't catch you.
Janu- Thursday, January 2nd at 9 o'clock.
Cause the Wednesday falls on the 1st. We can do it on the 2nd.
I don't have a problem with that.
Darrell, you good?
Yep.
Okay, so now we're gonna adjourn the meeting to...
Since you're doing them both, why don't you have a motion changing both of those meeting dates?
Okay. We need a motion to change the December meeting date to Tuesday, December 3rd at 9 o'clock. And, uh, the January meeting to January the 2nd on Thursday at 9 o'clock. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is Addington made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manus, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe? Okay. The meeting is adjourned.